We tell them We are the Union We are the Union The mighty, mighty 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 Union Fighting for justice 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 And for liberation 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 Come on, give it up!
When I say Union, you say power, Union Power! Union, power! When I say worker, you say power, worker Power! Worker Power! When I say Union, you say power, Union Power! Union Power! When I say worker, you say power, worker Power! Worker Power! When I say whose school, y'all say our school, okay? Whose school? Our school! Whose school? Our school! Whose school? Our school! Whose school? Our school! Whose street? Our street! Whose street? Our street! Whose street? Our street! Whose street? Our street! Whose school? Our school! Whose school? Our school! Whose school? Our school! Whose school? Our school! Whose city? Our city! 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 They say cut back, we say fight back. Cut back! Fight back! Cut back! Fight back! They say cut back, we say fight back. Cut back! Fight back! Cut back! Fight back! They say cut back, we say fight back. Cut back! Fight back! Cut back! Fight back! We say fight back, we say cut back. Cut back! Fight back! Cut back! Fight back! Ain't no power like the power of the people 'cause the power of the people won't stop. Say what? Ain't no power like the power of the people 'cause the power of the people won't stop. Say what? Ain't no power like the power of the people 'cause the power of the people won't stop. Say what? Ain't no power like the power of the people 'cause the power of the people won't stop. One more time, say. Ain't no power like the power of the people 'cause the power of the people won't stop. Hit the hands now. Ain't no power like the power of the people 'cause the power of the people won't stop. That's right, come on. Ain't no power like the power of the people 'cause the power of the people won't stop. One more time now. Ain't no power like the power of the people 'cause the power of the people won't stop. Who's got the power? We got the power! 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 Yes, give it up for your power. This gonna be the last one if we gonna march on back, okay? Solid as a rock Solid as a rock Rooted as a tree Rooted as a tree We are here We are here Standing strong Standing strong In our rightful place In our rightful place Solid as a rock Solid as a rock Rooted as a tree Rooted as a tree We are here We are here Standing strong Standing strong In our rightful place In our rightful place Fighting as a rock Solid as a rock Rooted as a tree Rooted as a tree We are here We are here Standing strong Standing strong In our rightful place In our rightful place Hey, hey. Solid as a rock Rooted as a tree We are here We are here Standing strong Standing strong In our rightful place Solid as a rock Solid as a rock Rooted as a tree We are here 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 Standing strong Standing strong Standing strong Standing strong We are here 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 Standing strong Standing strong Standing strong
Hey, hey. They just marched down here and then they marching back.
You can get a still picture.
Yeah.
Send me one. How you doing?
Alright.
Yeah, I'm trying to... I need to find that contact where I've been trying to...
Yeah, I'll get it while I'm on this. I'll walk down there for you. I see my way to walk down there.
I went two hours later, just missed you.
Get a picture, dog. Get a picture.
Hi.
Go on. Hey, how you doing? Alright.
Hey, how's it going?
Alright, alright.
Are you with the press?
No, I... I do this stuff. Myself.
Oh, cool.
Uh, video to commercial movies and this stuff. Everything is on the board.
Where do you publish this stuff?
It's on Facebook right here. I put it on YouTube when I get home.
Okay, great. I'm Brandon.
Alright.
I work with the Union over here.
Okay.
It's great to meet you.
Yeah, you too.
How long you been doing this for?
Fifty-nine years.
Fifty-nine years? Okay. What, uh, what got you your start?
Uh, going to leave and, um, I recorded so I played a bit. And then it was, you know, I was taking notes so it was easier for me to record. And I had to take notes.
Right. Well, you should for sure help yourself for it, but...
Oh, I'm good. I give everybody. I did some out about this, uh, a little while ago. I put it all out.
I was caught?
Yeah. But I just found out about it. I was hitting the lead anyway. I didn't know y'all was up. Yeah, that's my cousin right there, so you know him too.
Oh, that's your cousin over there?
That's him.
Cool. Small town.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Cool.
Well, it's good to meet you. One of my clients made this call you.
Oh, wow. Well, well, it's good to meet you.
Alright, thanks you. Alright, okay.
Yeah, if you hear anything, let me know.
Okay, alright.
I sleep. I can do that hook sign. You're perfect. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Maybe Scotty will be getting down there from behind.
I'm glad I'll be here.
Yeah, always a great tool.
I appreciate you. Gonna be in the crowd, we appreciate you.
Come on, man. Okay.
I didn't get hot. I'm gonna go sit in my car. I might have to go sit.
Coming up.
Uh, it's small room.
Right. A big dinner.
Somebody knows.
Hello?
I'm, I'm, I'm standing outside. The door is locked and the sheriffs will let us inside because the door's... I would say just like, I mean, it's winters. It's winters.
Oh, it's a four-way.
I don't know, like... Thirty-five? But there's also a sheriff, so I'm sitting in a lot, so I don't know. Just make sure like they're holding an active or something. Oh, make sure. Alright, let me back. I'm trying to walk in behind. Say, I don't know, like, hey! Yeah, he knows. Well, sheriff party.
Hello. He been there, he been there.
Sorry.
He know, he's worked.
How you doing?
Alright.
Hey, why the doors locked?
That I couldn't take.
He's going to find out why they got the doors locked. So you don't look.
Yeah. Can I hear from your door? Can you see on the parking? Well, well, I guess.
You know what? I don't know. I gotta hear the door locked.
Well, no, 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 no. Oh, you gonna let us in? Alright. They, they on the way down. Okay then. Alright, okay. Okay, alright, yeah. Okay, okay. They on the way down, they unlock the door.
Yeah, we couldn't figure out why the doors are locked.
I can't...
I think somebody might have just forgotten it was a meeting.
Well, they, they automatically lock at five o'clock. They automatically lock at five o'clock.
There you go. We dancing, what happens?
Uh, Perkin been in the hood before.
I saw you were wrapping it. Feel like you were the other guy. It's awesome. It's a good group.
What, what's part of y'all on the agenda?
Are you coming out too?
Well, you got the budget and you got, oh, they're trying to rezone the Maxfield building. They could do that.
Well, all those educators looking over too? Good. Uh-huh, I went up there and talked to the young ones too. Oh, I didn't see it on the news, but I was hoping you were filming it and stuff, but I...
I had no idea.
Hey, how y'all doing? What they have going on there? I saw a case you asked for more money. Okay, got you. I saw it on the news before I got here.
Oh, yeah, they did. Oh, you fine, oh, you fine. They did.
What's up, boy? How you doing?
I'm doing my, what, what, my duties, my civic duties.
Yes, sir.
I've been with yours and us. I've been with you for us. Just two of us. Two of us, I believe. Always believe. They had a special call me in the car.
Hi, mine.
How are you?
Good, Harry.
Yeah, I'm telling. He's truly a snack.
I'm scared of that.
He's gonna be a snack.
I'm scared of that.
Somebody else is gonna pull.
You going for whatever?
Uh, uh, no. I know the first fifteen of the public hearing. Me ain't got nothing coming. And it's gonna be a lot of people on the public hearing.
Oh, you are?
Well, I get the agenda.
It's two, it's two separate.
Oh, yeah. Your assistant minus. What's that? I beat the order. Then they moved it to night. I moved it to day. And then nobody come. They want nobody come with me, so then they moved it back to...
Hey, where is... So what's the big time? The budget. Just here, uh, an outstanding, like, event. Everybody in the country. I saw them too. Let me get my y'all's just shots started. How you doing? I'm good, how are you?
Good, love it. So we can do that. How you doing? Now, I was gonna say about this.
Okay, I appreciate it, please. Especially for your camp. Okay, thank you, Sean. Damn thing. The move actually won't be taken until after August.
I got it. The door's locked.
I knew it was locked when I came. I said, somebody must be coming down here. But I had a little fog.
Right. Oh, you good? You getting messy? I get my, uh, what I told you in that, in that post about, about the teachers.
I literally just got out there. I ain't even had time to put on a shirt.
I heard that. See, I just found out about it. And, uh, again, I had to look it up online to find out it was for real. I got hit by a car after five. Well, I, 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 I was okay. I tagged.
Is that why they're having two power hearings tonight? Like one about Maxfield and one about. How much coffee does he drink in preparation?
Drink coffee, this is real cold, cold, and like, uh, uh, probably better if I put more sugar. Put coffee, my sugar, my head's just.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everyone. I'd like to make the best to go over our safety instruction report today.
Good evening. To provide for the safety of those attending this meeting, please listen to the following instructions in case of an emergency. First, please take a moment to note where your exits are. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, please exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two doors to your right, and then proceed to the nearest stairwell, directions to which are indicated by the exit sign. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross Bramble Street, which is the street that runs beside our building, to our parking lot to be safely away from the building. Our staff will provide additional direction and assistance. In the case of a tornado warning, we ask that you exit this room through the hallway, or you will all remain until the safety exits. In any event of an active shooter in the building, if there is an accessible escape path, please run and try to evacuate the premises. If you can't evacuate, find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found and lock any doors that you can. And as a last resort, and only if your life is in imminent danger, please fight. Our staff will provide additional correction and assistance for what to do. Thank you for your attention.
If you haven't followed, we do thank you again for their life and strength. Or we thank you for those who have gathered, those who have come to wait. But we ask you continue to give us all the common respect of one another to do what is right for this county and citizens. We ask this in person, in name of.
Do you have any general questions, Minnesota, previous readings? Questions? All in table A, do you know my votes, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Without objection, so the rule I'm gonna move up on the agenda are. Item B and C, they are resolutions for our outstanding public servants. And I ask Mrs. Harris to read the resolution, Honored Reverend Dr. Thomas L. Walker, faithfully community dealing and civic advocate. Whereas Edco County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the strength of our county lives and the faith, resilience, and service of its people, and that certain individuals rise above where they're called to serve, inspire and lead generations. And whereas Reverend Dr. Thomas L. Walker has devoted more than five decades of his life to ministry, community service, and civic leadership, becoming a beacon of hope and a powerful voice for justice and unity in Edco County and beyond. And whereas Reverend Walker began his fast forward at his story Evergreen Missionary Baptist Church in Rocky Mountain, where he served faithfully for over fifty years, leading with physical conviction, compassion for all people, and ambition of community transformation. And whereas his leadership extended beyond the pulpit to the broader community through radio broadcasting, civic engagement, youth mentorship, and philanthropic efforts, as well as serving three terms related to county issues. Whereas in twenty ten, Reverend Dr. Walker was rightly in the.
Mr. Jenkins recently stepped down from his position on Tarverie Town Council, leaving behind a strong legacy of public service integrity and love for the community he served. Now, therefore, he officially and publicly noted that Edco County Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere gratitude and high regard to Mr. John Jenkins for his outstanding service and honors his lasting contributions to Tarverie and Edco County, adopted his second name to twenty twenty five. Pleasure, Joe.
Pleasure. All in table A, do you know my votes, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry, Reverend, would you mind if we also brought forward the schedule appointment for tonight? Um, we have Mr. Dave Peterson, Senior Regional Vice President.
Yes, sir, please come forth.
Chairman Wiggins, may I just remind everyone, please speak into your mic so that those at home can, uh, hear.
Thank you.
Do have some comments.
Good evening. While they pulled this up, um, thank you for having me th- this evening. I just wanna, uh, first say thank you to Commissioner Harris, who serves on our regional advisory board, and Salika Bennerman of BSS Attorney, she also serves on our regional advisory board. And, um, we want to make sure we're keeping local voices on that board, so thank you for having me. Um, this is my second time in front of you all, uh, since we consolidated, so I'm gonna try to go through this. Trillium Health Resources. I'm sorry, I am, I am Dave Peterson.
And what's your organization?
Yep, I, I am. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Uh, I'm Dave Peterson, I'm the Senior Regional Vice President of Trillium Health Resources. And part of the presentation will talk about, uh, what we do out there and how we, uh, cover, uh, forty-six counties, so, thank you. So Trillium Health Resources, transforming lives and building community well-being through partnership to proven solutions. We oversee, um, thousands of provider agencies that serve individuals with mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use, uh, needs, okay? So I'll go over a little bit in more detail about what that is. Um, this is our map. When we consolidated, um, about a year and a half ago, we were twenty-eight counties. And the State Department of Health and Human Services, and I say this, um, a little bit tongue-in-cheek, they liked us a lot, and therefore they gave us eighteen more counties, okay? Um, and with that being said, we are the largest one in the state map. But we wanna make sure that we're trying to stay local and public, because that's the biggest issue that's up against us coming from other states. Our total population is three point one million in, in those forty-six counties. We have members fifty-one thousand that are on the tailored plan, and the tailored plan is individuals with very high mental health development disorders and substance use needs. We have about hundred and sixty-three thousand that are Medicaid direct members, and here's the scary number. We have about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand people that have absolutely no insurance, none. Okay? That's the big issue that we're up against in this state. Medicaid expansion did help that, okay? But we still have a lot of people that are uninsured. This is why we wanna continue to make sure we are locally present. We have five regions, we have five regional advisory boards. Like I said, uh, Commissioner Harris is on the regional advisory board. We have five consumer and family advisory committees, or CFAX, Consumer Family Advisory Committee. Five regional vice presidents, and I am one of those. And we wanna make sure we are actively engaged in the local issues in every county. And I'll point out one of the reasons why we're local is Katisha right here. Happy in the room, no Katisha, okay? So I'll mention, in this next slide, like I said, Commissioner Harris, we also have, uh, Deborah Jordan, who a lot of you may know, is on our Consumer Family Advisory Committee. Myself, Prell Alston in the audience also, um, is, uh, it works throughout this county. And then Katisha, who everybody knows, as I continue to come into these meetings, she says hi to everybody. So we are fortunate to have her on this team. Now we're getting into some numbers. We served over eighty thousand individuals from July through December, okay? You'll see the numbers of how many had a diagnosis of mental health, how many had a. how many had a diagnosis of substance use, and how many had a diagnosis of intellectual and developmental disabilities. These are the very, once again, very high need individuals. Not someone that just, and I say just, needing some outpatient services once a month. These are individuals that have very severe, uh, needs. And that's why that cost was, uh, eight hundred and two million dollars to serve those eighty thousand people, okay? Lessons learned, um, so the state said to us, we've been dealing with those three disability groups for decades and decades and decades, so we are the experts on that. But they said, now you are going to manage the whole person. So someone with mental illness, who also may have COPD, or a heart issue, or lung issue, we now are managing their health issues. So instead of them having two insurance plans, they only have one, which is great, okay? What they also did, though, in twenty twenty-one, they took all the low-to-moderate risk individuals and handed them over to those five, uh, insurance plans. And so you'll see on one of the slides how many members of the low-to-moderate risk individuals are being served by these, um, insurance companies that are national insurance companies, okay? When I saw the kind of the grins when we said we're forty-six counties, well, these guys are in multiple countries, some of these insurance companies. And that's where the state's moving towards, giving it to the big guys. So when you talk about trying to keep it local, I don't know how much more local you can get by keeping it with us instead of going to some of these. But you all have heard, uh, that the state is, in December, moving every one of your foster kids over to Healthy Blue, okay? Blue Cross Blue Shield, Healthy Blue, will be managing your foster kids in Edgecombe County, not Trillium, okay? That's the direction the state's going. I won't go through this slide, but, um, you'll have that. I think you have that in your package, but I want to make sure you, that we get that. But there's a, a variety of different enrollment options that, that are in that slide, okay? And that started in twenty twenty-one. So here are some numbers, okay? Uh, what the, um, what we look like, and we still get a lot of calls because we've been dealing with this for decades, all right? And a lot of times we'll say, we will help, we will do a warm handoff of that individual over to Healthy Blue, or United, or WellCare, or AmeriHealth, or Carolina Complete Health. Because about eighty percent of the population that we used to serve got moved over to these insurance companies. So that's been a big change for us, all right? You'll see Healthy Blue is the biggest one up there with two hundred and ten thousand individuals, about twenty-one percent of the Medicaid population for low to moderate risk folks. Here's specifically your counting numbers, okay? We've managed two thousand twenty individuals from Edgecombe County. You'll also see, though, some of the other plans have served a lot more because those are low to moderate risk. Keep in mind, we only deal with, uh, very high-risk individuals. And that's kind of the pie chart of what we're looking at. We are eight percent of your Medicaid population that we cover in Edgecombe County. So what we did, and we did this here in Edgecombe, we, um, held town halls in, in twenty twenty-four, and we got a lot of good information from all of the counties, the new counties that, um, were, uh, moved into Tril- over, uh, Trillium. And one of the biggest ones that were asked about was, can you continue to have, uh, requests for proposals, okay? On services that are needed. I would encourage, um, and Eric and I can talk on a regular basis about when RFPs come out, um, because we really do want to make sure that when we do an RFP and it applies to your county, that you all apply for, okay? Because, you know, I'm, I'm listening in on some of the town halls that you're having, and they're, um, the get-off-the-list, um, uh, uh, implementation of that. I'm very interested to continue to work with Eric on whatever we can do to get Edgecombe off those lists, okay? So we are going to be trying to plan some more town halls in this next, um, fiscal year. Some of the project updates, um, we are still pushing for substance use prevention in schools. Um, we have, uh, Narcan kits, re-entry simulations. I did see that we did do, uh, crisis intervention, intervention training with law enforcement in Edgecombe County. So we want to continue to, to do that. But here are the options that, on, on a lot of these projects, that we want to encourage Edgecombe County to take advantage of. Um, we do know people with disabilities have a really hard time moving from high school into either, uh, uh, college or into a trade school. And we want to, um, that's that transitional employment program that we really try to push. So there's a lot of different project updates on this slide. So now to drill down even further, um, total members served July through December, okay? So only a half a year, you had one thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight, uh, folks being served. And I always say, if you try to add up those, the mental health number, the substance use number, and the intellectual and developmental disability number, it won't add up to one thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight because a lot of these individuals have, uh, dual diagnoses. So some have both mental health and substance use. So that's the numbers of people that Trillium served in the past six months, from July to December, okay? This is just our access service line. We have multiple lines. You know, we have a business line, but we also have a crisis line, and that's the one that we always try to make sure folks are aware of. But, um, we are, uh, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day with our, with our, uh, crisis lines, okay? So, um, we want to make sure that folks can call whoever they need to call. Uh, but I always say, um, Eric does have my phone number, and anytime anybody wants it, and I say that to all commissioners, um, that you're more than welcome to give me a call. I've been, this phone hasn't left me in probably thirty years, so more than welcome. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I want to get on the way of the next topics coming up, so.
Your, your topic is important also. Any, any, uh, questions from the board? If not.
Of course, I did want to say, I appreciate, um, Trillium allowing me to attend a conference where I was able to get a much better understanding of what Trillium asks, like what they do. And I was actually able to, uh, get in contact with someone to help a relative of mine that I found, um, while I was at that conference, so I appreciate being able to, uh, and go to different sessions, so that I was able to, I'll be able to capitalize on that stuff a lot, uh, to do exactly what you're doing.
Thank you.
Let me ask you, anybody in the audience might have a question, or might be opening up something I need to. But, um, I think it's important because we don't give this opportunity often. Uh, so anybody in the audience that might have a question, uh, it's not as natural. That's what they do, what they do, and they don't help. Might have a reason or a family that this organization can't help. If not, if not, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
At this time, I'm going to back up a little bit. At this time, I'm going to call to all the public here, um, to discuss proposals on requests from Mr. C. Two. Public here, call to all, uh, we need to keep the three Republican votes.
Yes, sir. Public Minutes here, I give the public hearing to tell about Board of Commissioners in Edgecombe County on November the second, two thousand twenty-five, six o'clock noon, in the John F. Felt Commission, Room Second, Fourth, ten minutes straight ago, in two to one, St. Anthony's Street, forward, in Carolina. To consider an act of law case number twenty-five, CRZ zero-two, a request to resound parcel of investment to the corporation of David Allen, N.C. one eleven, South McHale, also identified as parcel number three-seven-eight-three-six-seven-three-zero-six-eight-zero-zero, as well as a parcel in by Timothy Allen Harvey, trustee at Allen, Kansas City, one eleven, South McHale, also identified as parcel number three-seven-eight-three-eight-six-four-two-three-six-zero-zero. The applicant, C.T. Williams, requests her to resound property on AR thirty rural residential to R twenty C, Midst Residential Condition District. Top of the proposal, map available for public inspection during business hour, at eight thirty-five, in the county planning office, from two o'clock, ten minutes straight ago. Two to one, St. Anthony's Street, forward, in Carolina. All parties, all entities, registered, provided, and presented, in their due time. This is twenty-second, May eighth, twenty-five, all of the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County, and facing court to the board.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to invite, uh, Mr. Durbin Spail, our Planning Director, to come forward and give us an overview of the project. Uh, while he's on his way, for, for reminder to the board and benefit of the public, some of the folks that are here tonight interested in this matter, will know that this has come before the board before. Um, as you'll recall, at the last time that you considered this, um, an even number of commissioners that were present that night, and it ended up being a tie vote. Because of that tie vote, it was neither, uh, approved nor rejected. Um, and so that allowed Mr. Williams the opportunity, if he wanted to, and obviously he did, to bring that, uh, bring this project back, uh, before the board, uh, for your consideration. Um, also, just want to make the board aware and the public aware, as you see, we are at a even number of members, uh, again, tonight, so there is a possibility, um, that, um, you couldn't have a tie vote, I just want everyone to be, uh, aware of that at the outset. We'll revisit what the recommended action will be at the end of, of the year, but I would like Mr. Spail to give an overview of the project.
Mr. Spail. Good evening, board. C.T. Williams requests to resound parcels of approximately one hundred seventy-nine point two-eight acres and one hundred fourteen point eight-one acres from AR thirty rural residential to R dash twenty dash C, Midst Residential Condition District. The purpose of this request is to allow for the development of a subdivision with minimum lot sizes of twenty thousand square feet, including the condition that only single-family site-built, uh, detached homes are allowed. Per the concept plan, the proposed subdivision will have a maximum of three hundred thirty-two lots. The AR thirty rural residential district is established to protect rural and undeveloped, undeveloped lands from premature development at densities that are inconsistent with the county's adopted policy guidelines. This district is also intended to protect established and future agricultural and forestry activities. The R twenty Midst Residential District has a neighborhood scale or character with individual developments arranged along major transportation corridors and within designated areas proximant to municipal areas. The district allows a wide variety of dwelling unit types at higher densities of around two units per acre. Though densities may be increased based on open space permissions and design quality. Residential neighborhoods include a variety of different lot sizes and housing types to promote diverse housing options for county residents. The planning board voted unanimously to forward a resoning request to Board of County Commissioners with an unfavorable recommendation. The planning board stated the rezoning from AR thirty to R dash twenty dash C is inconsistent with Edgecombe County's adopted policy guidelines, as is where it's ending. Twenty fourteen dash twenty thirty-four comprehensive plan based on that it is not consistent with growth management policy in the fire world. Um, Tenico Zupman, um, this Melanie Hudson, Melanie Hudson with the Environmental Health Division stated that there are no applications or permits on file for the parcels for deceptive systems. Harry Keeter with N.C. D.O.T. stated that the proposed subdivision will have to go through an official review. Mr. Keeter also commented that a preliminary, uh, review has been done by N.C. D.O.T. and the amount of access points shown on the concept plan will not be allowed in which the developer would need to create several streets to reduce access points. After the conclusion of the legislative public hearing, Board of Commissioners shall decide the conditional resoning application in accordance with the standards in section two point three, point seven, the review criteria. The decision shall be one of, um, one, approval of the application, two, denial of the application, three, approval of the revised application, four, remain the application to county staff for further consideration. The decision shall be based on the legislative discretion of the Board of Commissioners taking into consideration the recommendation of the planning board and the standards in section two point three, point seven, according to the review criteria. In making this decision, the Board of Commissioners shall adopt a written statement.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes.
If no one can hear you.
Okay, in making this decision, the Board of Commissioners shall adopt a written statement of reasonableness and consistency with the county's adopted policy guidelines in accordance with section one sixty, dash six oh five of the North Carolina General Statutes. Okay, and so now I'll present, um, a representative of the applicant to present their case.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I do want to say, uh, I think it would be appropriate that for the applicant, Mr. Williams, to un- again, to understand that you have an even number of commissioners here tonight, there is the possibility that there could be a tie vote as it was before. And he does have the option, if he would like to, um, have this, uh, public hearing recessed until next month, or if he would like to proceed tonight, that certainly would be an option I recommend to be offered to Mr. Williams.
An option is offered. Mr. Williams?
I guess we'll proceed.
Please come forward.
That's fine. Hello, I'm Cecil Williams, and anyone hear me?
I think next to you.
I'm Cecil Williams, the applicant, um, with C.T. Williams Corporation. I don't have a lot to say. I do request that when people that are against it speak, that I be given the opportunity to address our concerns, um, as soon as they are done, so I can, uh, try to, try to look forward. We are developers, we, um, have the thirty thousand, this is a completely different request than it was the last time we were here. Last time we were here.
You put conditions on this request.
We put conditions on this request. And those conditions, we were asking for twenty thousand, and we put conditions, only condition we're asking for is that the, the houses are going to be, um, site-built houses. The, we, we own the land, and we could, I guess, if we're not successful, do the thirty thousand square foot, if that's what we have to do. And the thirty thousand square foot has a lot of options in it that we have taken out in our request. And our request is only for the twenty thousand site-built houses, twenty thousand square foot. And it'll be site-built houses, so I'm not, in the order of, of time, I'm gonna just, that's all I got by this second, and, um.
And basically, what I read, just single-family only, is that correct?
Yes, so we know rentals, that, that we know, uh, there's no rentals, it's all single-family. Um, no, and the D.O.T., I do need to explain that. The D.O.T., we have all interior streets. We do not have any road front lots, all interior streets. But we do understand, and we will connect our streets to reduce from seven driveways, and we want to reduce it down. I don't know how many we can reduce it to, but it will be less than seven. So that'd be less than seven houses accessing the road. All of our streets are interior. So I'm gonna, um, let Mr. Tolson, he's our engineer, I'm letting him follow a whole bit more technical stuff, and I'm gonna be here to ask some questions, he will do. Thank you all.
Good evening, I'm Mike Tolson with MaKé Associates, mere of the engineer that prepared the application and prepared the sketch that you've gone in front of you for, this rezoning request. I think, um, just, just to give you a little bit of background on why the, uh, difference between our thirty, our twenty is to be able to, um, reduce the development costs that come with building in our thirty versus in our twenty. Hey, our twenty lot. Hey, R twenty lot, you know, requires less frontage across the lot, and the name of the game in development is to be able to keep your development cost down as low as possible. So if you can have two lots in the same space that you would have one and a half lots, otherwise, you know, you're, you're, you're reducing your costs and making it so that the development cost can overall be, uh, a lower number. Uh, and that is one of the main concerns for this. In order to be able, um, to make this project make, you know, economic sense for the developer, uh, and you have cost of land, you have cost of infrastructure, you have roads, you have, uh, water infrastructure that'll have to be installed, you have individual septic systems that'll have to go on each lot, and with that all total, when you project those numbers out, the R twenty just makes it so that it's a little bit more economically feasible, a better project for the developer, and overall, um, still probably will bring you what will amount to the, the, the same number of lots, I don't know, about, you know, three hundred, three hundred and thirty overall lots on a three hundred acre tract of land. Um, we are in the process of getting the soils evaluated out there. We don't have that information yet. Uh, there are some, um, I've been told so far that the, uh, soils are coming up. We, we have a, a lot of different variations in the soil, so we'll have to really take a look at that, which will impact the layout that you have in front of you with the number of, uh, lots, the actual size of lots and everything else, and we just don't know that today. We won't know that until we get a real good design going, and one of the points we have to know is whether or not we're aiming at a twenty thousand square foot or a thirty thousand square foot minimum lot size. So some of these are questions we're asking you to help us know what we need to design for, whether we need to aim at those, your point. I can say from the lot, um, layout that you have seen in the sketch and the packet that you have, uh, that the average lot size is around twenty-three thousand over those, all those lots, and there's still not gonna be twenty thousand on the nose, uh, type lots. So just some, to boot the ball, as you go through and look at that and know that, um, you know, there's been some thought put into this, but there's got a lot of design that still has to be forward. Of course, we have a DOT review, we have a, um, a county review for the plans and, um, and specs that'll have to go to build the roads. Uh, there'll be a DOT review that has to be done to be able to see if there's traffic that might succeed and everything else. There'll be amazing plans, you have anything else to store to review with the state, all of those are things that we do after we know what direction we're heading in with the R twenty or R thirty questions. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but that's just a little bit of a baseline of what this is. Preferably.
Yeah. My one question is, if we're voting on this, will we be voting based off the plan that they provided, or if they make changes to that plan, it would have to be nine to four?
If they make, um, what the ordinance describes, or last thought that I might, major modifications do have to come to the board, and that would be things like increasing the, the density, um, increases in the space, increasing the height, those sort of things do have to come back to the board. More minor modifications, um, like the rearrangement of internal streets, you can go to the state, or you can staff.
So the other things that were mentioned tonight, are any of, would we consider any of those things major that we would need necessarily?
The thing is, most obvious, I think, would be the change in density, um, between the blocks. If, if the site plan has an X number of lots, and they would propose more lots, that would get changed in density. It would come back to the board.
So I would always check, he's asking us to clear the three thousand thirty.
Okay, yes, sir. The, uh, site plan calls for a specific number of lots, right? And I think the question was, if, if, unless they do more design, without approval from the board, does the site?
You're approving that, setting order of lights.
It says.
And that would come back, stay out, and those discussions like they just stay out there, they would be telling about, please come back to the board.
Yes. So just for frame, we're basically proving, we would be up to a maximum amount, and then make it lower from that point, and that wouldn't be a necessarily material change?
Well, there would not be, uh, it would get changed in density. The, the ordinance says change in density, it doesn't just say increase in density.
It also, yeah, right. Just seemed like there was a lot of talk about changes that were happening right from the start, it might be better to, maybe that's not for me to say.
Uh, I have a question. They're about to make a fine, so it's like, concerns of what, what was approved, what I, what I, those are the things that, all of the discussed, uh, stay out. There were houses that they could have made, I've never had a vacation. You approve the threat, that was definitely. Something. Yes, that's.
And then right now, a maximum of three hundred and thirty-two lots.
There is no vote, or vote, if you, if you have a question.
If I may, none of us can hear you. None of us can hear you.
We can't hear the discussion.
Okay, please hold.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get your questions, sir.
No question, just can't hear you.
Thank you, please, thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to get somebody that would like to speak. Would you, could you show her her hands who would like to speak? Well, okay, I'm gonna start, right here, sir, and request that you come forward and sit in there and address the public.
Thank you. My name's Sam Johnson, uh, two four six six Hartland Road, Battleboro. I am the, uh, Director of Operations at C.T. Williams Corporation, and just wanted to touch on a few things. Cecil was running a little late, and, uh, maybe you may have noticed, so, uh, I came a little bit prepared, but, um, anyway, thank you all for, for, um, having this hearing and letting us talk about some of these things, and, um, so in the packet, the, uh, staff report that we were, um, we received, as well as you as commissioners, um, had a copy of chapter ten of your, um, Edgecombe County Comprehensive Plan, and in the section of housing, um, I noted that the first four, um, items in that plan, we feel like we're trying to address. Um, let me first say, our, our attraction to Edgecombe County was the fact that Edgecombe County was trying to attract industry and development, economic development for the county, and along with that comes housing. You all recognize that in your comprehensive plan, but the housing options and diversity, um, is one of your options that, that talks about having housing available throughout the county for people who, um, either don't desire or can't afford large tracts of land. Um, that's what we're trying to, to provide. Um, affordability, um, low to moderate income, uh, households can afford the type house that we are planning to put in the subdivision, uh, designed for seniors and, and disabled housing. All of these houses are, um, built on slab, which makes them, uh, accessible. A lot of the builders' plans are one-story, uh, which would, uh, play into, uh, the elderly and, uh, potentially, excuse me, disabled. Um, and I, I say all that in support of the economic plan, economic development plan that the county has. Um, the other things is the, the higher density, um, in one area, we feel like it really helps Edgecombe County decide where you put your resources as far as infrastructure of emergency services and schools. For example, if, if you build three hundred houses across the county, um, an acre here and an acre there, then you all are forced to maybe decide that you put extra EMS help in one area and maybe not in another. Uh, with this density, we feel, you know, it helps you direct maybe some of those efforts into that Michael's Field area. We also feel that being only two miles outside of Michael's Field, that hopefully that drives economic growth for the Michael's Field area as well, restaurants, shops, those types of things. Um, as Cecil mentioned, there's no road front lots, there may have been some, some confusion about that. All interior streets, um, all the roads are built to N.C. DOT standards. It says in our HOA, uh, guidelines that the intent is to turn those roads over to N.C. DOT as soon as the development phase is over. Uh, we don't wanna be paying for those roads for the rest of, of our life, and, um, so we build those roads from the beginning, uh, to N.C. DOT standards. Um, some other questions that I think have come up, it's all underground utilities. Um, we, uh, we did send an email to each of you commissioners that had a drone video in it, I'm not sure if you were able to open that, but it showed, uh, current development that we're doing in Bailey, William Run, off of Stripland Road, and I would like to think that you, you would have agreed that it was a, it was a well, well-done subdivision. Builders, um, saw at the front yards, so everybody starts off on even keel, we're not responsible for, uh, outside of HOA. HOA will manage, um, unruly, uh, yards and that kind of thing, but, um, um, you know, everybody has a different, uh, way of doing those things. Um, and again, it's also been mentioned tonight, too, that I think, you know, we are a family-owned business, um, we are also a for-profit business, so we are in, in business to make profit as, I would assume many of you who own a business or work for a business, that's, um, part of your objective is to maximize, maximize the, um, return from the assets that you have. That's all that we're interested in doing. We feel like the increased density can also help the county control, uh, what's built there with the conditions that we've put in our, our request of single-family, um, site-built homes. Thank you for consideration.
Can you step up a little bit, move, is anybody to speak, right behind you? Mr. Spail? Mr. Mike?
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Matt Pike with Carolina Gateway Partnership for the Economic Development Arm for the county, as well as city of Rocky Mountain, town of Tarboro, located three eight six northwest, Main Street in Rocky Mountain. As we've been charged in this organization, we're a, uh, a private-public partnership that recruits industry here, projects over the years, but projects such as, um, the Tachi Group, the Cornings, the Sarah Lee, the Cummings, uh, all these are all projects that partnership over the last, uh, twenty-plus years have been a part of bringing and enhancing the job, um, availability in this county, as well as the region, and because of that, uh, the legacy that's been put forward by this, uh, commissioning, uh, the legacy of this board, uh, in particular with the Kingsborough Business Park. Obviously, you're very much aware that millions and millions of dollars has been put there in the hopes of bringing employers from all sizes, of which we're seeing an extreme amount of, of interest recently. One example, obviously, the Metro Energy announcement of last fall, uh, requiring a thousand-plus jobs, but also we're seeing existing industry expansion coming at us with jobs we've seen in smaller projects, uh, we call them singles, doubles, and triples, such as, uh, Prudential Piping here in Tarboro, as well as Amazon's Last Mile facility. All of these, uh, projects, as well as many others, have been, as a result of product available, land, sites, et cetera, that track companies that want to come here, not to mention, um, the overall culture, community, um, you know, attributes such as water, natural gas, electricity, all those things are key components for economic development, uh, to the community, for the hopes of generating tax revenue, uh, as well as jobs for the region. With that said, um, one of the things I wanted to point out to the, to the commissioners, as well as the general public, within the region, it's not only within Edgecombe County, Rocky Mountain, and Tarboro, um, when you factor in the jobs that have been recently announced in Wilson County, Pitt County, and Edgecombe County, um, it's over thirty-eight-hundred jobs that will be coming on board in the next two to three years. We have another thousand in the pipeline right now, there were expected favorable announcements, so it's pretty close to five thousand jobs that are gonna be coming to the county. Use the multiplier of three, where every job usually creates three. Uh, so you can see the impact that economic development, um, is gonna have, and the key component of success is obviously workforce. All of our clients, new and old and existing industry, always ask the question, where are these folks gonna live? So with that said, we need to have workforce out. Uh, granted, it needs to be, um, appropriate to the community, the culture that's in our communities, but as we go forward, projects such as this is, are very well, uh, needed and very, uh, well-received by industries that come and look at our community to locate their jobs. Um, it's critical, we have major projects right now, the best, or the, the most important question that we have to answer is, are we gonna have places for people to live? We gotta have them. We made this investment, um, we need to ask ourselves if we didn't do the investments over the years, where would the people that are working currently, Sarah Lee, the Tachi, Cummings, where would they be today? And it's not only for new employees coming into the region, it's for our children, it's for grandchildren that'll be taking advantage of these properties, and we need places for them to live. We would be very much in favor to, uh, pass this, uh, report.
Any questions? Next, next room?
I'm Thomas Hosen, forty-seven sixty-five, N.C., more left to south, Michael's Field. As an enjoying landowner right beside this, you know, I had a long list of reasons that I didn't want, for that, I don't want this to happen, but our time limit really isn't enough. You know, instead, I would like to just talk to y'all about, um, I would think about it in a different way, you know, the, the land currently is on A.R. thirty, the land currently owned by Mr. Williams. He's gonna build houses, no doubt. I mean, I would do it if it was me, but, um, you know, we are the taxpayers that live in this county, that voted, to my knowledge, for all the commissioners sitting here. Um, you know, let's think about how it affects us taxpayers, the people that are living there. You know, there's always more roads, there's more traffic, um, more people, and sure, growth is good, we all know it, and it brings money into a four-county bycarers. We all understand that. Um, but let's just, let's just think about it in a different way, and that is, leave it to A.R. thirty, and we all, you know, given the, the plan that, that y'all have in front of you, and the run behind the acres, you know, with the swamps over there and everything else, if it's R twenty, it'd probably be three hundred-plus houses. This A.R. thirty, like it is, might be two hundred houses. He wins, we win. We still get the less number, fewer number of houses, fewer number of people, and then he gets his houses. He's gonna be able to recoup his money and his investment. So please, take a minute and think about that, you know, coming from taxpayers, people that voted for y'all, people that live in this county right beside it, not a man in this county. Thank you.
Now, next, next room, anybody to speak? In this room, anybody to say, next room, behind, anybody to speak? Move it on back.
Hi, I'm Sharon Pauline, I'm in.
What was your last name?
Pauline. I'm in Michael's Field, around one twenty-two miles. And, um, I really didn't even know what that was going on until it was so far down the road, but, um, I, I really appreciate what the gentleman's before me said, about reducing it down to two hundred houses, because, and I appreciate what this man says about all these jobs, and we hope all these jobs come in, and I do hope, I do, I sincerely do. We need the revenue, we, people need jobs. I'm in New York State, it's very hard to find anybody that can qualify for a house in this whole county. Unemployment and, um, to pay the wages, some of you, you can't get the money. So two hundred houses is gonna be a challenge, but you call. But the other thing is, I heard this other gentleman say, no rentals, no. Check me if I'm wrong, when you sell them, you gonna sell them, that's a house, but there's nothing that's gonna say, oh, HOA, yeah, I heard HOA too. Oh, HOA, yeah, I heard HOA too. I'm just telling you, I'm not buying it. I think as you see HOAs though, I'm in a HOA, I'm in a HOA down at M.O.I. And that's the way it was, absolutely, no rentals. Now, what we got? We got no properties. So I'm just telling you, I hear two hundred houses coming outside of Macclesfield. There's no, no police department, we don't have a county police. We have no doctor, no clinic. We have one grocery store that's getting ready to close their doors. We have very little, if any, so we have trash picked up, you want to call that so. That's it in Macclesfield. So trying to attract people into that area and for two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar homes and get them qualified, I think two hundred would be pushing, and three hundred would be pushing. Just be absurd. But I, so I do appreciate what the gentleman before me said, and I do hope he says, hey sir, that I'm lucky, because we struggle as it is. Thank you.
Last one. Move it over here. Anybody here? On first floor, anybody here? Come on, please, man.
My name is Marilyn Augustine. I live at forty-seven thirty, Highway one eleven south in Macclesfield. And I would like Mr. Williams to explain to us, because he, I did pick up what he said. If y'all don't vote to change it to R twenty, he said, then R thirty, that's going to change things because of the stipulation that he said, if you go R twenty, they're going to be stick-built. Well, if, if, I think that you maybe need to ask him if, if you don't vote for it, and if it stays R thirty, as far as us citizens that live around there, why can't that stipulation also be put in that they have to be stick-built homes? I don't know if you could do that or not, but I'd like him to explain that a little bit when he said that things can change if, if it stays R thirty.
Whatever. It's already R thirty now, is it?
Correct.
Whatever the requirements are in the ordinance now, he can do. I don't know, I can't say what those requirements are. Would you like to address it, Mr. Williams? Would you like to...
I think you've done a good job there. If it's R twenty, that gives us opportunity to condense our subdivision, and we can afford to limit ourselves. But if it's R thirty, I don't, standing here, I can't tell you what would be more profitable for us to put on this property. So we're going to abide by the rules that this commission gives us to abide by, whether it's R thirty, we abide R thirty rules. If it's twenty without our conditions, that's what we're going to abide by. That's, that's...
As I'm understanding it, ma'am, the request now, he is making that request to put those conditions on it, to make it still, like it's still...
Yes, sir.
What is, what would be in R twenty otherwise? I don't know, he's putting those conditions, he's requesting those conditions himself, you know? I can't tell you exactly what those states now, but I do know whatever is in those ordinances that's there now, he could do, other than him requesting, what he can't do, okay?
Okay. Well, can the engineer tell us why R thirty rules?
I can, we can, this, this, we can, I'll, I'll turn it, it's a, it's a whole bunch of uses, okay? It's a bunch of, in all of our zoning districts, there are these things that you can do, okay? And this is the things that can be done. And that's the reason that you come back and request it and resolve it, so that you can do some things differently than what maybe you could do in the industry, in what is probably resolved. You got to give us that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Spalk can correct me if I'm reading this wrong, but under the permitted uses of current Unified Development Ordinance, under R thirty could be a family care home, conservation subdivision, manufactured home, class A double-wide, manufactured home, class B, single-wide, could also be single-family detached dwelling. So those are the permitted uses under AR thirty.
And we have no restrictions in terms of what could be done in the presence of them. Anybody?
I do.
Please come forward.
Lyri Jordan.
What's her name, please?
Lyri Elliott I. Jordan. Five sixty-four, St. Allen's Road. I think the really big issue here for a lot of us is, we see a lot of these subdivisions sorted in Edgemont County, and they're, they don't get finished with houses. They get finished with trailers. And so far, it's the companies that we've been told that would come. Over the years, we're told a company is coming, and it doesn't. The entire company was supposed to come, and it didn't. Ever since NAFTA, there really hasn't been a change in Edgemont County. We all want Edgemont County to prosper. We do. But our biggest fear is, you're going to start on the subdivision, and you may sell a handful of them. And I know that this is a five-to-ten-year project. That right there is a big risk in Edgemont County. Because these businesses may say they're going to come, and they don't. And then you're, you're sitting there with all this land that you've got to sell to make, to even break even. What are you going to do? Do you understand what I'm saying? Yeah, what, I'm sorry, what are you going to do?
Address to the board, ma'am, address to the board.
Okay, I'm sorry, well, what I was asking him is, what is he going to do? I mean, he's got all this land, he's got to sell it, and there's nobody to sell it to.
Well, I guess...
So, and I, I heard what you said is under R thirty.
And that, and that's, that's any development risk.
Right, right, and I know that because the subdivision down the road, for me on Stallings Road, was told to us on Stallings Road that it was going to be a subdivision for people working in rural. It's a trailer park, and that is one of our biggest fears because I can tell you all about that trailer park. It's not the best. And we're afraid that, you know, it's going to bring in crime, and it's going to wind up like a lot of these subdivisions have in Edgemont County.
But ma'am, I can address what it will be. I can only address that, uh, what's for us, and that's a rezoning request.
Right, but this is...
R twenty, R twenty would probably restrict the trailer park. So sometimes when you bring, things are rezoned for trailers and things like that. But any landowner has a right to, 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 wants to, to use their property according to the way it is zoned.
Right, and I understand that. Other thing is taxes. Property taxes. I have a pretty good idea, and the rest of us do too, it's going to probably go up because the Cameron water out in that area, I've talked with citizens out there, you're going to have to put a pump out there because right now, the Cameron water out there is not best. I had one citizen tell me, she can't even fill up her bathtub. So that's going to have to be addressed. And then you've got the schools, and people's property taxes are going to go up around there. I mean, it's, there's a, it's just really, we see property taxes going up.
Well, I, I think this board is empowered to do that. That's not what we expect, that we're going to have to do. And I think we're about at our check, it's a limit. We're trying to, this not, we're discussing our budget there, and we don't want it to pop taxes either. So we're not in control of that. But addition of new homeowners with a problem, in my mind, help us decrease tax revenues.
But what if there's, what if, what if there's none homeowners, and the chief got to go ahead and plan for these homeowners, but there's none homeowners?
Well, that's the problem. We will plan for them. We plan, we plan for the things that we have to do. So far, I think our staff is going to make some drop in there. I don't know what would happen to society, and I don't know how to answer someone with concern because things, things would happen, there would be some crime, search of property. Go control that, but all of those things probably can't be answered, and I'm not, until such time. This is approved, but... On the other side, you know...
There's a, I have to answer some requests, that's my ability. We do a lot of research before we pick a spot that we want to try to put a subdivision in. We got one in particular in Bailey that we're doing now that we projected that we would be selling three houses a month. We're selling seven a month. So the, the demand is there, and we, and it gives us the twenty thousand. A lot of people don't want the big yards with the grass and all that stuff to cut. They want to have, this is what they want, just run on the concrete, walk right into the house and all that stuff. But we do tremendous amount of research to know that we feel confident. And then we, and we feel so confident that we are restricting ourselves to these site-built houses that we're talking about. There will be no mobile homes of any kind, or no anything other than what we're saying we're going to do.
And I, additional, additional, custom-based, lowest water rates, okay? Additional custom things.
Do you know what the median house price is in...
Stop right there, please.
I'm sorry, the median, I'm sorry. The median house price in Edgemont County? The median house price in Edgemont County for twenty-twenty-three is a hundred and sixteen thousand.
That's a long time ago. In the real estate world.
I mean, you bump it up. If you bump it up, it's not... You say now, what, a hundred and seventy-five thousand? And the medium one acre of land is, what? You want to say four thousand dollars? Five thousand?
No.
Seven, eight?
Twelve.
Twelve? But it's not two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So if an individual comes in and does their research, and I can assure you that the income bracket that he's looking at is the income bracket. My husband and I are in, they're going to do their research, and they're going to see two hundred and thirty thousand to three hundred thousand dollars when I can buy an acre of land and build my house and not have neighbors. I mean, that's, that is really tempting because a lot of people will be in Edgemont County for the wider space. Just saying.
That's ourselves, George.
We're not going to argue on that list.
Do I?
We're not going to argue on that list.
I'm living with a power, pastor, I'm happy.
Anybody? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is John, I'm eighty-three, Gulf Coast Drive, Pine Tops. My property is eight mile and a half from where this development is built. First off, I researched this under R twenty. It does allow for duplexes and townhomes. So a twenty thousand square foot lot, you can put two, two units, or townhouses. R thirty does not permit that. So I, I sent an email to all of you back before this was brought up the last time here. My concerns are, how many more deputies, sheriff's departments are there? Three more fire companies than we know in this county. You know, right now, we're under rural, we have rural fire departments. I mean, nobody's there unless something happens. And in traffic, on Route one eleven, I came up here tonight. When I got to forty-two of one eleven, what they call a triangle there, it is a mess. And I don't see that getting any better when you have another six hundred cars hitting on that road there. Where this property is located, it's two rural roads deep. And one eleven is a major north-south Rockfish County. And I live just off of one eleven. And my development was built in nineteen ninety-eight. There are still lots for sale in there under R thirty. So I, we may have a plan to sell these lots. What I don't want to see, number one, you lose farmland, you lose that forever. It's a topsoil disturbance, you could never recover that land in a farming. This is an agricultural county, it's governing industry. Now, I know industries say they're coming in here, but none of them showed up yet. Stores are closed, Riden closed, Stateover, that closed. And other stores, they just built a Dollar General in Macclesfield. Now, they have a, it's for rural people, people that live out in the country. That's the only other store in Macclesfield except for a little grocery store in there, and a little country store. That's it. So these people have to come to Tarboro and live in there. You know, or you got to go to Wilson, that's the only office for healthcare, Walmart, gasoline. This is where you have to go. And I just, I've lived in this county for twenty-five years. I love this county because it's been a reasonable rate of development. This is not reasonable, this is unreasonable. You're going to put six hundred cars, probably twelve hundred more people in there. And one of my other concerns is that if you have three hundred septic systems, that's a tremendous amount of untreated wastewater that's leaching into the soil. It's going to wind up in the creeks, it's going to wind up in Tarboro. Regardless of what that does. So I wish you would consider all these things and the people that live around this, this area, and you would vote please not to approve this. Thank you.
I know a lot of women that work with...
My name is Deborah Whitworth. I live at thirty-five thirty-six, NC one twenty-four, right down the road from this property. And just to be in the background. I seem here today deeply concerned about the rezoning of the land. While growth and development can bring opportunities, we must be realistic and responsible about the impact changes on the safety and the well-being of every one who lives in this home. One of the biggest challenges we face right now is infrastructure, especially our emergency services. They're already stretched thin. The number of people living here and these services that we support, we've expanded our community without strengthening those group of systems, but every single one of us are at risk. I'm not here to criticize anyone, to these dedicated people, because they work tirelessly. But many of them are people that I know, they're my neighbors, even members of our church family. They do their absolute best with the resources that they have. But the sad truth is, there's simply, there's not simply enough of them. And it's not enough that they're the growing command that we're looking at with this house development. Let me share a recent, very personal example, just for a few months. A few months ago, we had a close family friend, I received a phone call, she was in an emergency situation. She's someone very dear to me. I went to her house, she needed medical attention. We called the rescue squad, it took over thirty minutes for us to get a rescue squad there. Because we later found out that it had to come from another town. We later found out that she had a stroke, several strokes. Um, and it, some things could have been prevented, that she had had a little quicker attention. And she stayed in the hospital for eighteen days, a lot of complications still there. Thankfully, her loved one's okay. But that delay could have been very devastating. I'm not here trying to blame anyone. The point is that we just don't have the necessary services for the people that are currently living in our area. Our emergency infrastructure is struggling. Accorded and adding more homes and more people and more traffic without addressing these issues puts the lives in jeopardy. And rezoning is just irresponsible and it's dangerous. This community is made up of mostly locals. Most of these people here, their parents were here, then their children, and now their grandchildren. That's what I mean by locals. We work, we shop, and we play in Tarboro, Wilson, Grebel, and Rocky Mount. But we still come back to Mackersfield, that community which we call home. Why? For the peaceful, country lifestyle. If we wanted to live in the city, we would be in Tarboro, Grebel, Rocky Mount, where these businesses are. I encourage you community leaders and planners to prioritize the safety and the quality of life of the current residents over rapid development. Let's work together to build a community that grows at a smart rate and not a fast one. And I appreciate your time.
My name is Rich Whitlock, address is thirty-five forty-six NC one twenty-four W Mackersfield. Good evening, I've been, I'm here tonight because I care deeply about our community, our land, and the way we live, and the relationship with the natural world around us. I understand that development is a part of growth, and I am not against building homes. But the proposal to rezonate rural lands to allow more housing than currently permitted isn't just about homes, it's about fundamentally changing the character and balance of this area. Let's start with what we have, a peaceful, rural setting, a delicate, delicate mix of farmland, forest, and open space. This land isn't empty, it's alive. It's home for deer, foxes, owls, the countless other species. Rezoning for higher density housing threatens all of that. It fragments habitat, disputes, disrupts migration paths, and puts pressure on already fragile ecosystems. You can't go into those woods and expect nothing to be lost. For those of us who live here, we owe it to the future generations to protect these resources and maintain the natural character that makes these communities special. Also, more homes mean more cars on natural, narrow rural roads, not designed for heavy traffic. It means added strain on well, city tanks, and emergency systems. This is, we talked about as fire, rescue, schools, and Sheriff's Department, that are already being stretched. People invested in this community with the understanding that zoning protections were in place. Changing these protections not only risks lowering nearby property values, it breaks trust with the people who live in this area. This isn't just a planning issue, it's a value issue. Do we value rural life, self-reliance, open space inconsistent with nature? Or do we, or are we willing to trade that away for higher density and short-term profits? I used to live in a housing development, it was a smaller one than what this is, because this was actually a larger one in Mackersfield as far as new houses. These were custom homes that I lived in, I was on one point two acres block. And there's always a problem with kids going across the yard, other people's dogs, or someone that get along with someone. So I can't imagine with three hundred houses, with the number of people that will be in those houses, and the number of cars in those houses, what kind of problems is going to exist? I urge this board and everyone here to thank the young property lives and permanence. Think about the long-term effect on the land that adults and the people can call this area home for generations.
Is there anybody else to speak?
Good evening, my name is Brad Hill, I live at thirty-five forty-six NC one twenty-four West. Uh, Mr. Williams pointed out that this new rezoning request is a brand new, and it's got a condition. And I'd like to point out that the only homes that he stated all along that he would build were single families that built houses. There was no talk about trailers, duplexes, until community public brought fears of those things. And then he started feeling like he was using that as a tactic against us to maybe make us sway to our front side. So this new application gives the compromise, gives the appearance of compromise. In reality, it's just restating his original plan that he brought to you months ago. The main concerns remain increased traffic, road wear, pressure on emergency services, overcrowded schools, stormwater runoff, and no sewer access. There's been some talk tonight about land use plans. It was pointed out that they feel like this fits into Echon County's land use plan. I'd like to take a moment to highlight Mackersfield's land use plan. That plan was, uh, published about a year ago. And in that plan, the public was given an opportunity to voice their opinion on what mattered the most to them. And in that plan, I quote, they stated, "Maintain the small-town feel." Mackersfield currently has just over four hundred residents. Mr. Williams' plan includes three hundred and twenty-three home sites, as shown to you this evening. Even if you conservatively figure, two people per household, that's gonna add six hundred and forty-six new residents just outside a town where no sewer is present and there's limited infrastructure. Even if the homes are built in phases, as he says they will be, the impacts on roads, schools, and emergency services begin immediately. While support systems to handle them lag behind. The county and its taxpayers will be left to deal with those consequences. I know there's a prospect of, of a lot of people moving into the county, some additional tax dollars, and sure we'll get property taxes off those individuals. I'd also like to point out, if they're working in Wilson and Johnson and Johnson, that's probably what they're gonna do to shop them too. So we can't bank on every single dollar from those individuals. R twenty zoning should not be granted without the infrastructure to support it. Sewer should be a baseline requirement for dense development like this. Building over three hundred homes in a rural area without that infrastructure shifts the burden onto the county and its taxpayers. And that's not responsible planning. It's creating problems that could have been prevented. Mr. Williams says this rezoning request is about making the pieces fit for an interior subdivision. I would argue that he could do that easily today with larger lot sizes and fewer homes. He also said he uses about twenty different house plans. Rezoning to R twenty will multiply the repetition of similar-looking houses and erase the rural charm of our community. If you've visited this area before, you know exactly how high a place that's gonna look. Developers are targeting areas like this, not because we're growing fast, but because land is cheap and regulations are loose. They could buy farmland, pack in houses, and leave the county to manage the fallout. That's not community-focused growth, it's profit-driven development. Echon County must stand up for smarter planning and long-term value. I would argue that AR thirty zoning is not a barrier to growth. As Mr. Tolson said earlier, two hundred houses is a compromise for us. Many of us don't want any of those houses in our area, but certainly two hundred homes is growth. And if the county's looking for growth, then I think that's a compromise. That supports responsible development, homes with variety on larger lots that respect the land and the community. The Planning Board has now unanimously voted against this twice. And I think that kind of clarity should matter. Um, so I sincerely ask this board tonight to please vote with the community, vote with the Planning Board, vote no. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Robinette, four-one-two, Harris Hager Plain, Pine Tops. I want to start by acknowledging this board's dedication to grow in Echon County. Like you, I support reasonable development that strengthens our communities. But this rezoning request from C.T. Williams Corporation is not that. This is the wrong project in the wrong place at the wrong time. And your Planning Board has now voted twice to deny it based on fear and practical concerns. First, the infrastructure is simply not ready. The most recent traffic data is from twenty sixteen and nearly a decade old. Roads were not built for subdivision-level traffic. In addition to three hundred homes that bring hundreds of cars, bu- uh, buses, and service vehicles through these rural corridors every day. The estimated cost to bring these roads up to standards between three million to six and a half million, and none of that is paid by the developer. That cost found, falls on the county, on all of us. Now, we've heard the project will bring in new tax revenue around a million dollars annually in property taxes. But when you factor in the cost of expanded emergency services, utilities, law enforcement, and potential school impacts, this project still leaves the county with an annual deficit that could exceed eight hundred thousand dollars. We're also told it will boost sales tax revenue. But geographically, the subdivision sits on the edge of the county. These future residents will be commuting, shopping, and spending their dollars in Wilson and Pitt Counties. Edgecombe gets the traffic, the wear and tear, and the service demand, but not the benefit. And let's be clear about something else. C.T. Williams is not the home builder. This is a, this isn't a single cohesive project with a defined outcome. Mr. Williams company prepares the land, installs the infrastructure, then puts lots out to bid. Builders not present here tonight will take over. That means many of the promises made about design standards, quality, and neighborhood integrity are not guaranteed. Once the land is sold, the project is no longer under local control, and neither is the outcome. This kind of growth is risky, costly, and outstep the Mackersfield land use plan. It's caused for low-density development that preserves rural density. This rezoning ignores that. It overrides the community's vision of the speculative project that brings more questions than answers. This Planning Board got it right twice. This project is not ready, this location is not appropriate, and the benefits do not outweigh the burden. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
My name is Crystal Hill, I live at thirty-five forty-six NC Highway one twenty-four West Mackersfield. My property, um, connects to this piece of land. Um, as my husband stated earlier, uh, I just wanna restate this. What we're looking at today, the only difference is more land. Which, if you remember the last time we were here, the people said this would happen. Because this is what's happening in other areas. Developers are going around buying up land and going around buying additional land. Once they get one piece of land and get a reason like it is, they continue to buy up more and more land. And that's what's happening. Mr. Williams showed us the same exact house plan the first time. And as my husband stated, it feels like a tactic, or I will go as far as to say, it feels slightly threatening that you have to approve this in order to have this stipulation on it and feel like you have to do that for the people, and that the people feel like, oh, we're gonna have trailers or whatever it is if we don't aside with this. And I don't appreciate that. I mean, honestly, I don't feel like it's good to put you in that position, and I don't feel like it's good to put the people in that position. And the bottom line is, I'm still here today saying that I'm against it, because if that's what he decides to do, he's got to deal with the fallout. He's the one that stood up here, and it's on video and everything else, and showed what he was planning to build. And if he changes that, then that's on him. We have trailers down the road from us. Those people, I know them. Matter of fact, they feed me at some of the restaurants that I go to, and they're some of the sweetest people that I know. So do not try to threaten us with trailers. Because those people are just as good as the people living in three and four hundred thousand dollars. Three and four hundred thousand dollar homes are not low-income. So anyone that's voting for low-income, that's not low-income. At all. This is, our elderly are not gonna live in these homes. My, my grandmother couldn't go buy a three and four hundred thousand dollar home. So I'm not sure I understand that at all. It is gonna be the size of Mackersfield. Are we here to build another town? If so, maybe we need to have another discussion. We're not here to build another town. We were here to build up the town that we have. That's what we're trying to do, but nobody wants to go in Mackersfield and build that up. We have a development, economic development team, and they're doing their best to try to, and our, our council and everything else, they're doing such a great job at trying to build Mackersfield. But this is not building Mackersfield, this is putting another Mackersfield outside of Mackersfield. Another thing, we talked about, I think we said it earlier, someone mentioned about all the businesses that are coming to Tarboro and coming to Wilson. And yes, they are coming, and it's wonderful. It's wonderful growth, because the people that are all living in Mackersfield now have high-paying jobs that they can go get. But those people, Wilson is building homes just as fast as communities around here are trying to build homes. I mean, matter of fact, they might build them faster than five years. So that's where all the people are gonna go live, outside of Wilson and outside of Tarboro or outside of Rocky Mount, where they're building these communities. We have something so special here, so special. It is a rural area where people like people in this room that you're looking at want to go live. I work in Wilson, and I come back in Mackersfield every single day, because I love where I live. I don't wanna live in a small community. If I wanted to live in a city, I wouldn't. I used to work in Raleigh. I used to drive back and forth to Cary every day, because that's how much I love this area. And I'd like to add that if you drive through our community, and I have, and I suggest everybody in this room does, you will see something very special. Over the last five years, my home included, beautiful, custom homes are being built. And not all of them have to have tons of acreage, but they are two acres, or five acres, or ten acres, or fifty acres, or whatever they can afford. And others are being renovated, and they're being constructed. There are homes under construction right now, there are beautiful custom homes. And I'm not sitting here saying there's two of them out there, I'm saying right around the community. There, I can name a whole lot, I've got more than two hands for it, that have gone up in the past five years. Our little town is growing. It's not going through massive developments, but in a way that reflects why people come here. For rural farm life living, for space, for peace, for connection to land, the land that this country was built on. This is natural growth, it's organic, rooted in heritage, not driven by outside developers or massive rezonings. What's most beautiful about this whole entire thing is the people that are building. Generations, they're coming home. Not because of new developments, but because this community still offers the life that they treasure. That's what's at stake tonight. This community has already spoken, not once, but twice. The Planning Board has voted unanimously, let me say that again, unanimously to reject this rezoning request, and yet here we are again. The last council vote ended in a tie, and honestly- The last council vote ended in a tie, and honestly, many people that live in this area left thinking that that was a done deal. And we know otherwise now, and we understand. And we're back here tonight. People still showed up. That's how important this is. Commissioner Webb was elected to represent this area, and he has made his position clear. And I respect him for that, and I appreciate that. There's also been a town meeting by the developer's team, another chance to speak out. And yet again, the majority was no. Even the Town Land Use Plan, as my husband mentioned. This is a document that is shaped with public input. It clearly states that maintaining a, quote, "small-town field," end quote, is a priority. This isn't an opinion. This is a written policy that is meant to guide these exact decisions that we're having tonight. And to ignore it is to ignore the people and the foundation that the town has committed to. Approving this rezoning sets a dangerous domino effect in motion. It opens the door to more applications, accelerates unwanted change, and makes it harder to say no next time. There will be a next time. There will be a next time. Because the developer before us tonight is already looking the other way. And there are other developers that I am aware of that are looking at other properties in our area. This is not about one person. It's about the future that we're shaking for our area. At some point, people believe that their words don't matter anymore. That decisions have already been made behind closed doors, and that these meetings are just a formality. If we say that this is a democracy, if we say that public input matters, and show the people before it's too late, before they start choosing to move away, and I know that sounds crazy, but they will. It has happened in other developments like this. Matter of fact, one of my neighbors recently moved here and bought a very nice home to find out that this was happening after he bought the home. And he moved here from another town nearby to get away from this. Unfortunately, he spent money on a house now and just found out that it's right around the corner. Growth at the expense of losing residents is not worth it. Too rapid growth can also be a bad thing. I know we won't grow, but too rapid can be bad. Let's follow the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Board. Let's uphold the Town Land Use Plan. Let's listen to the people who live here, who work the land, and who call this place hunting. And let's show them that they still matter. Please vote to deny the application. Thank you.
I was just gonna say that I appreciate everybody coming here, but I would please ask people to refrain from making assumptions that are not true about my business plan, about what I do, where I come from. Let's stick to facts, you know what I mean? Thank you. Is there about, you know, a couple? Let's get this done, bud. I'm winding this down now. No more hands. You'll be the last speaker. That's the last speaker.
Hello, my name is Greg Hathaway. I'm the president of Edgecombe County. I live right there next to the action. I'm at 4723 NC 111. And I've been a longtime resident of Edgecombe County. It's always been a rural county, like I've heard. As I've been waiting to come up and speak to you all tonight, a lot of the points I was gonna make have already been made, so I'll keep it short and give you a curated list. The biggest thing that I see, obviously, jumping from Maxfield being, you know, a 300 or so, 500 population community to doubling with this plan, seems like a really big jump. Everything I've ever done, it seems that taking baby steps is the way to go instead of huge steps. And so it seems like it's a setup for disaster anyway. I know we're beyond the point of the initial meetings, and I came in a little bit late, so I'm here for this second round of rezoning consideration. So, yeah, I don't think we need, you know, 200 houses. I think it needs to be less than, way less than that, but we are where we are. A point that has not been made yet regarding particularly Highway 111 and Highway 42, the traffic right there coming from Pines Oaks goes across to, it's the triangle. The gentleman mentioned it earlier, the triangle. It's already a potential disaster. I don't know how many accidents have ever been recorded here, but whenever I approach that intersection, it's always a little bit weird, because it's at an angle like this. And if you've got more than a few cars coming up, it's like you need a roundabout. And certainly, if you had 300-plus homes, you're gonna need a roundabout. So I don't know if you put that in the bus on books, you know, for traffic considerations. I use AI to do research online, and I'm seeing another $2 million for that. So, and that's just, the only reason I'm bringing that up is I travel that area every day. And so I know that that's gonna be a huge consideration. Something else I think may have been mentioned was, you know, 300-plus homes, you know, that are on set systems, that's a swamp running right through the middle of that. My house and Mr. Tolson right here, we live right next door to the action. And there's a swamp that runs right through there. So all the potential concerns with the wastewater and making it into the creeks and the rivers, that's a major concern for us as citizens, and it should be, you know, for everybody in this group. So I give it two thumbs down. That's just me, sir. Thank you all for your time.
Yes, sir.
Um, please, like I said.
Name is your name.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I'm Keston Lee in 647 St. Louis Road. Spent a lot of time out there. We're not in those woods in these homes, but there are huts. There's no more ACs in those development. That's just the minor stuff. Me and my wife, if we're not gonna like something coming up behind us, we're gonna give it a fair chance. And my wife, we took a Saturday and went and visited his homes. I was not excited about it. I've walked through maybe five or six of Adam's homes, but it was nice people. The homes were not nice. The nicest home they had was the ones that worked out. Not only that, but the more expensive ones, that they had, nearly all the concrete that you can see, had foundation cracks. Nobody moves in these houses. And I will correct him on one thing, because he did lie to us and y'all. He said that he does not build a home, if you remember correctly, without being sold first. Well, I asked my wife to ask the young lady, he can speak to sleep, like, if we decided to buy this home, can we buy this today? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Item number one, from both representatives of their homes. We went in the blue tape. With blue tape, you know what that means, correct? A blue tape, my house is basically all the faults, things that I had to go over and touch up. I'm not a home builder. I haven't built anything I can think of, you know, from my experience here. It's not quality homes. It's bare minimum inspections passing. They're not good homes. I'm sorry. The items homes that we're supposed to be getting, what was referenced in the first meeting, they're not good homes. I have a brother-in-law with inspections. I don't know which area. He says, again, the roofline, you can see sags. That's from very, that's bare minimum. $250,000 for something like that is a basic apartment. I don't think it's worth it. Not higher than that. $250,000? Yeah, it's, please say, 2023 is old news, but I'm looking for a lot of expenses. I'm a burned-out citizen. I couldn't make enough money in the county, so I had to go somewhere else. And now I've got a big uptown just shoved right up behind me. It's just, you know, one thing after the other, but I'm burned out. I don't want to know that citizens are buying overpriced, overinflated houses that I know personally aren't good houses. Foundation cracks on these $300,000 to $500,000 houses, which I guess represent maybe, or comparable to the back nine, if y'all familiar with that. Does anybody travel back nine? Those are those houses that I've seen, foundation cracks with no one in it. Every piece of concrete, you can see sidewalk, driveway, the carport, cracks. I would certainly encourage y'all to see these houses for yourself, but that's neither here nor there. I'm just, I'm just still, y'all can vote, know today, and everybody, like the gentleman said again. He's gonna build houses. If he wants to build a trailer park up there, hey, you know, put your name behind a trailer park. It is what it is. Maybe that part of R-30, it does not need a town. It's gonna look gaudy, ugly. Nobody wants it 50 to 1, I think your phone calls were, that was the last time. Nobody. We appreciate him taking, you know, he's an investor. Edgecombe hasn't been hurt for a long time, but putting a whole town right there in the middle of nowhere where everybody else, you're the cows, farms, tractors. But now you have overpriced homes that may last 10 years, in my personal opinion. It's been all over Facebook with the bad root. I'm pretty sure he knows about that. But anyways, that's just my concern. We're already in line to the first place. Both builders, not him, have told me they have these homes for the man, but there's probably six homes that no one's in. So if you're not building, homes that are already sold. If you're building to fit the man, there's nobody's up there. Thank you.
At this time, on my petition, if you haven't understood that, it's best I'll have it up. You got four days?
Yes, sir. About three things, right quick. The gentleman that was just speaking, Adam's home is one of our builders?
What's before this board, listen to me.
Can you talk into the microphone?
What's before this? Is a rezoning request, not the builders. The builders are not before this board.
That's right.
Okay. A rezoning request is before this.
I agree. I agree.
It's not for me to consider.
I agree. I agree. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would say that there's a lot of people here that are respected people, but you people represent a lot of people that are not here as well. They might need homes. They might have a different opinion than what you say here today. But all these homes are $75 million in tax base. We go along the ways to fix problems some of these people talking about. I guess that's why I needed to end it. That's why.
Are there any questions on this? Where are you?
Did you get a concise yes or no from the Town of Maxfield Board Commission?
Yes, time to let this here, she'd like to speak. But yes, we got a commission, yes, we had a resolution from the Town of Maxfield that was unanimous, more so affirmative for the subdivision. I thought that was in y'all's package.
It is. I'm just, I brought it up, because I'm wondering if the citizens who live there know if their town sent a resolution.
Resolution. To the board, unanimous consent, unanimous approval of the decisions of the county.
And this is a request, not necessarily for the town. This is a request for the territory, for that outside of the town, that's not a state. This is within our zoning jurisdiction, so we appreciate that resolution from the county. The other thing is coming.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. President.
But you can feel they are already restricted, they're only sticking to the law.
I would have to look at it, and all this, we focused our attention, our money, our dollars, with engineer, that's a lot of money, but it's, it's, that's what we're saying.
At this time, it must have been a puppy hand. I would join the party. You join the party. At this time. All right, please do. Please do.
You have in your packet, Mr. Stell provided, the copy of the review criteria for it. The page that looks like this, page number 59, that is section 2.3.5G. I think the end of the reference is 2.3.7G, and I believe that's the convention we're setting. You have the, the right, I'm just gonna make sure we're here on the reference. 2.3.5G, that would be criteria.
Here's a question on the board.
I guess I'll make it a comment. We live in a 507-square-metre area with 40,000 people. Our population has dropped dramatically over the last 10 years. I understand what everybody here has said tonight, and I agree with about what everybody said, whether you're for it or against it, but there is no way that we can continue on without development and getting business here and growing areas. If not your area, it's gonna be somebody else's. I just recently had 17 homes built in my area in West Edgecombe. They were priced for $250,000, $300,000. I said, who are you doing? They're gonna sell them. They sold off 17 of them. Don't necessarily think that you're gonna be losing the end of the battle when it comes down. I understand you don't want population. I'm speaking to everybody, anybody who lives in Edgecombe County, because we all have to consider this in the future. And we have worked hard over 27 years to get somebody in Kingsburg, and what you believe it or not is coming. I can't tell you that this one's gonna be there, but I'm telling you, it's coming. We just don't spend the time as much we've spent to do that. The other side is, everybody wants their taxes cut, but they don't want growth. You can't have both things. You just cannot do it. So, you know, we all have our aim, we all have our ambitions, we all have it all involved. I have three children that don't even live in Edgecombe County. They're professionals, and they went to other larger places. Farming? All of it is golfing. Only farming is a large part. We have to do it. That's the way it's gonna be. But I would just say to you, you see my name, you can contact me later, not tonight, another week. All of us are gonna go to sleep sometime together. But I would like to hear your ideas on what can be done to help us. And I'm talking about Edgecombe County. I'm not talking about Maxfield. I know you folks in Maxfield love Maxfield. I spoke with Mr. Webb about this. But the bottom line is, do you want to live in a future with children and grandchildren? An area that is just simply underdeveloped? And you guys know if you live there, you go down to the town, and I know you think it's great, because it's not a lot of traffic and not a lot of things. How are we ever gonna have a decent first aisle? How are we ever gonna have a decent gas pump? How are we ever gonna have anything very decent in any area if we don't have some population support? We have some of the most valuable land in Southeastern part of the United States, in Kingsburg. And the same thing that you're talking about, people driving to Wilson and driving to other towns, they drive here to work. Some people already do that. You need to look at some statistics for people to travel from county to county to work. I feel for you. I wanna vote in your face, but you are voting for your own future. And not only you, but anybody that comes to Edgecombe County, they're voting for their own future if they do not want growth. So me, I can't go against the planning board myself, and voted twice, but I think it's time for y'all to consider, not just us, but what's gonna happen in the next 25 or 35 years? Are we gonna continue to diminish the population? Are we gonna continue to raise taxes? Are we gonna continue to provide less service for more money? Because if we don't get business, if we don't get people, if we don't get population, we have a doomed effort going on. That's just the way it is. It's not because I say it, it's a fact. So when you think about these things, if you wanna contact me, some of you I know that I've seen, my children grew up with your children, I would love to talk to you, not about what we do here tonight, or what we're gonna do here tonight, or don't do here tonight. I'd simply like to get some ideas from you. Say, hey, I see what you're saying, and I think if we look at this, it might help or might not help or whatever. But we can't go anywhere without everybody going. But we, we can't go anywhere without everybody going, look, and to have pockets and pockets and pockets. And let's be honest, when you go to Macclesfield, I go to there along with my business, look what's happened. Your restaurants gone, your grocery stores going. I understand what you're saying, there's a bunch of people coming. But I thought the same thing when they built around my house, and that's only seventeen houses, no, I'm not trying to put this out of proportion, but I was very surprised at the people that brought, and the kind of house that is brought. And I was very surprised how fast they sold. But, and I have a business in Wilson, and I'll tell you, a lot of businesses survive from people coming to live in areas, and y'all know that, I'm not telling you anything different. But we gotta have homes, if you wanna have any, you gotta have industry to supply. You just gotta have, and we gotta have growth. So again, contact people, if you have an idea, you all sit down and talk to anybody anytime, anywhere. We're looking for actions just like you're looking for actions. Unfortunately, we all have to get to a point that our actions may be moving in the same direction and offer so far for each other. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other board coming?
One of the things I wanted to say, I heard a lot about EMS, and we know as the population grows that we have to improve EMS, everybody knows that. And DOT will be the ones making sure that counties don't do roads, so that will be DOT, will be maintaining roads. And as he said, nobody knows anything different, but we cannot grow without change. People are always afraid of change. Who's gonna be living there? Somebody that hopes to have a good life, just like you did. So we are hoping, we can do jobs, we've gotta have somewhere for people to live. And we don't want everybody to have to live in a different county, we're trying to make jobs in Edgecombe County. So we want people to live here as well.
I just want to clarify one, one thing. I think it was kinda clarified, but in, in the agenda package, it is a resolution unanimously approved by the Town of Macclesfield. And so that point was brought up by several members, but the full board of Macclesfield unanimously approved this and put it in the agenda package to be included in this S A request, so just wanted to clarify a clarification there.
Can I ask a follow-up? Was it an R twenty and or an R thirty?
Yeah. I answered your, okay. What it says, and you can, we can get you a copy of it if you want, but whereas the Town of Macclesfield Board of Commissioners have reviewed and discussed the proposed development on N C one eleven south near Macclesfield.
Yeah.
That was advised for the citizens.
The same guy from the last meeting.
Because the point was made by several people in the audience, that Macclesfield did not support it. I, I, and it was a part of it, and I think it was important that it was presented.
And I, I bet that that part was also made. And, you know, even based on what I've heard, the position, you have to be reasonable to support, because all of the things that, that it stated, you know, it's, and I think the change is kinda, and I think this board, tonight, we have the opportunity for that. And based on the review criteria as well, the proposed conditional resort advances public health, safety, and welfare. The proposed conditional resort of the proposed location is consistent with purposes, goals, objectives, policies of the counties of the policy, as expressed in two thousand and fourteen conference plan based on the power of reason. It increases, it increases housing options, it enhances economic growth and potential. And the proposed conditional resort is reasonable in the public interest, and the concept plan associated with the conditional resort is consistent of human purpose, of awareness out of there. That's why I make the motion for the conditional resort, and it was to see to it. Second.
I'll second.
Second, I'm going to vote, pay for the motion that's made in second, he said, be known by raising the right hand. We're going to vote, good paper. Do you raise your hand?
Yes.
All opposed, please raise your right hand. The motion passes, passes through. The proposal request is passed.
Wow. Wow.
I'm leaving this there.
You have ten eight minutes?
Already, wrote it out.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Of course.
We just started.
Clear.
I'm gonna say, y'all will be believing, still got more stuff than I know.
But, like, don't, just know.
I'm what I expected. That's what I expected. Appreciate it.
Years ago, I was really happy.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna.
That's what I expected. That's what I expected. Appreciate it.
Years ago, I was really happy.
I'm sorry.
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 For what I was thinking.
Oh, wow.
From, sure. From, from Trump Hall, because I was, I was thinking, this could be a, 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 a lamb.
I'm sorry.
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 Were you here for the Macclesfield thing?
There. Yeah. Gotcha. Period. My son's here the same.
Yeah. I'm busy. Still with, still with partner. Awesome.
Fire station.
I drove by that the other day, or not the other day. Thank you. I'm sure.
That's who you're speaking about, right there.
Thanks. But it's a lot harder to check the fire station. I mean that too, but, yeah. Yep, yep, yep. Good seeing you. I'm fine, Ian.
Hang in there.
I don't know if we've ever been introduced, Peter Carrion.
I'll back to my stance. I'm sorry.
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 I'm calling, you back to order? I'm probably in the middle. So just before two thousand, twenty-five, twenty-six, but. You hear the call to order? Mr. Speaker, would you please read the public notice?
Yes, sir. Those who sit right here, the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners can conduct a public hearing on Monday, June second, one twenty-five, and stick the Clark P in for the purpose of preceding sixty comments for input on the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget. Citizens interested in reviewing the proposed budget can use our website at W W W dot Edgecombe County, and that, the topic will also be available for you and the Edgecombe County Executive Office, County Administration, two oh one St. Andrew Street, Suite four oh two, former North Carolina, two seven eight eight six. Citizens who wish to address the board on this matter may do so to meet during the public hearing. Citizens may also submit their comments via email to publiccomments@edgecombco.com about mounted Tammy Faison, part of the board, P O Box ten, former North Carolina, two seven eight six. All written comments received at five o'clock PM on Friday, May thirtieth, if you'd like to meet. Tammy Faison, part of the board. Is that as? Sir, Mr. Chairman. So I will, in your, to the board, in your agenda pack, you'll see that there is a budget message, which is typical customary format, the county managers present the budget, proposed budget, for the benefit of the board, as well as the public that are here tonight, those who are watching, to get a good overview of the proposed budget, you'll see that I'm sharing it with you in presentation format. So first, I want to say that in all that we do, but especially in us crafting our budget, that we make sure that we pay attention to our vision for the county. Some of you may be aware that we have what we call a two-sided vision statement. One side faces our citizens, which says that Edgecombe County is a historic place that values its citizens and natural resources, and creates opportunities where people are proud to live, work, and play for generations to come. The other side of our vision statement faces inward towards us as an organization. And that side of our vision statement states, Edgecombe County values its employees so that it can be an organization committed to providing exceptional services to our citizens through an innovative, passionate, and creative team devoted to excellence, integrity, and transparency for the continued growth of our county and staff. Not only is the budget preparation process guided by our vision, but it's also guided by our mission. Many of you have heard us talk before about our initiative called Getting Off the List. Unfortunately, we have a wonderful county, but we do have some statistics that we need to pay attention to, and we need to do as best as we can to improve our position on those lists. I share the picture of our former county manager, Mr. Lorenzo Carmen, because Mr. Carmen used to always say, I'm sick and tired of being at the top and bottom of those bad lists. So we thank Mr. Carmen for the legacy that he left with us and our organization, for building our organization's capacity so that we can take on such an initiative. And so really, this budget is about seeing how we can better serve today while planning for tomorrow. Our objective, well, my objective for the presentation tonight is to first review our budget priorities, to share key budgetary challenges, to give an overview of the proposed budget, to show our investment in the county's future, and to summarize what this budget accomplished. Just for our citizens to be aware that this is, our budget preparation process is a very long process. It actually starts at our board's annual retreat that takes place in March. At that retreat, we both look at the year behind us to see what we have accomplished, but we also gather feedback from our commissioners to hear what your priorities are. You know, no matter where, what county that you're in, no county has unlimited resources, and so we have to make difficult decisions. And so we want to make those decisions in light of priorities that, that the board of commissioners that you all have elected have identified for us. Next in the process is we have individual meetings with all of our department heads. We have eighteen departments, and we meet with all of our department heads. We also meet with some of our outside agencies. Certainly, we give an open invitation to any of our outside agencies that we fund, but we in particular have discussions with our larger outside agencies. After that, our board, we have a budget committee, and this budget committee has met three times to discuss this budget, to look at the initial components of the draft, to give us the staff additional direction. I would like to recognize our budget committee members. The chairman of our budget committee is Mr. Donald Boswell, and thank him for his leadership on that committee. Also, Commissioner Dr. Evelyn Powell is on that, as well as Commissioner Ralph Webb, and we thank them for their service on that. They have been with us along the way in this very challenging process. Next is, our board has a, a budget work session that we held a couple of weeks ago. Some of you may have seen that. We showed that live on YouTube as we do our commissioner meetings. Then, of course, tonight, we are having our required but necessary public hearing. I will note, just in case you were wondering, it is not the board's plan to adopt the budget tonight. It has been our, our board's practice to hold the public hearing tonight, but to give themselves some time, decide if they hear from you, and they decide if they want to make changes or adjustments, they want to give themselves the opportunity to do that. So right now, it is planned that we will have a second meeting this month on June the twenty-third to adopt the budget. It does have to be adopted before the end of fiscal year, which is June thirty. So next, I want to talk about our priorities. Now, before we talk about what's a priority, we always have to remind ourselves the reason that we exist as a county. I'm sure everybody has an opinion about county government, whether you think it's good, bad, or indifferent, maybe sometimes you like it, sometimes you don't, but we exist for a reason, and the reason that we exist, we're created by the statutes of the state of North Carolina. We are here to serve our citizens. You can see the, the different categories of funding or services that include human services, public safety, public works, education, and a number of other county services. We keep this in front of us throughout the budget process because sometimes we might get a little excited about a special initiative or new project, something that we want to invest in, but we always have to come back to center, and center is, we have to provide these services to you. That's the reason why we exist. But even in light of the, the services that we provide on a daily basis, our board, a couple of years ago, at their retreat, identified priorities. Those priorities included our staff compensation, education, law enforcement, and public safety. Then, at this year's retreat, they added to that list, at least for a particular consideration. Then, uh, at this year's retreat, they added to that list, at least for a particular consideration with building the FY twenty-six budget. And that includes equipment for our solid waste department, uh, for us to evaluate our assets and look for efficiencies, to analyze our immediate and future budget drivers, and to use debt strategically. Now, uh, our budget objectives, so, uh, staff and I, as we work on the budget as individual departments work on their budget, and we, uh, at the executive level, work on the collective budget. Our objectives as we are working on this budget is to let the budget reflect, um, our priorities, to minimize fund balance appropriated, to address, uh, critical capital needs and obligations, to make budget decisions with economic trends and forecasts in mind, to follow our fiscal policies, and that we, uh, make sure that we take care of obligations over aspirations. And that simply means, uh, we have to make sure that if we have something we really like to do, we can't do that at the expense of something that we have to do. And so we keep those things in mind as we're working, uh, on our budget. So, key budget challenges. I debated with myself for a, a great while whether or not I wanted to show this slide. I am running the risk of getting too deep into the weeds. But number one, in the, in the spirit of transparency, and number one, to help you all understand, uh, the mission and, and part of the challenge that we had in crafting this budget, is there are some critical numbers that we have to keep in mind. Now, some of you, maybe your eyesight is not, my, my sight is not what it used to be. I'm only able to see it because I've got it in front of me. But that first number at the top right, where you see the category at the, at the left, it says the starting fund balance. This is a fund balance analysis. Think of this like a reserve account, a reserve account, or a savings account. It is money that is set aside, that is designated for certain purposes. And so, um, at the end of FY twenty-four, our total fund balance was, you will see there, thirty-one point six million dollars. That's total fund balance. That is some things that are set aside for specific reasons, other things that are, uh, just in our fund balance, but not particularly designated for anything in particular. That number is important for us, and I'll explain to you why. We have to, uh, we have to try to determine for the current fiscal year that we're in, how much of that fund balance do we expect to spend? How much are we going to have to dip into a savings account to, to cover our budget from the beginning of fiscal year to the end? That number that you see, it is an estimate. Um, it is a very informed estimate, but it is the estimate. It is saying that we potentially will spend out of that savings account, if you will, just under five billion dollars. So if we spend it out of savings account for this fiscal year, it's not available next fiscal year. So again, please don't take these numbers to the bank in the sense that this is where we will end. These are projections. But you'll see that next number, projected fund balance. So if we had thirty-one point six and we spend just under five, that leaves us twenty-six point seven million. There are certain categories within that savings account where that money is, is sort of designated. The first one is non-spendable. That could be, uh, money that we hold in trust or some custodial, that we can't spend it on anything else. We've got to designate it there and it's got to be available for that particular purpose. Uh, the next one is called stabilization by state statute. The state of North Carolina requires that if we've got receivables, let's say if there are sales tax that we expect to get for that fiscal year, but it has not come in yet, we count that, but we can't spend it until we get it. So that has to be set aside, um, in this, uh, fund balance. Uh, it could be other things. It could be grant funds. Oftentimes, we get grants and it is on a reimbursement basis. We might get granted ten million dollars to do some infrastructure project. We spend the money upfront, we get reimbursed from the state, or whatever the source might be. Uh, at the end of the fiscal year, we may have spent the money but have not yet received it back. We cannot count that money to be, to be available to spend if we have not gotten it back. So it reserves those kinds of things in that category. Then the next category says revaluation reserve. As you know, every eight years, um, we have to do a total revaluation of all the properties in the county. That is a very expensive process, as you would imagine. Because it is so expensive, we set aside money every year into our reserve account or into our fund balance, and we hold it there, so it's available when that time comes. So after you look at the twenty-six point seven estimated, we set aside all these, these other lines for those reasons. Then we look at what might be available. That next to the last line, ten point six million dollars and some change. This budget for FY twenty-six, we are proposing to take out of, uh, out of that reserve and to put in our budget to spend for next year. Now, I, I will tell you that, uh, we have never spent as all that we have, have budgeted from fund balance. But if we budgeted, we have to assume it could be spent, right? And so then that brings us down to that last number, that seven point two million. That means if we end up the current fiscal year as we are estimating, that means if we budget this, uh, fund balance appropriation and we were to spend it all, though it's highly unlikely that we will, then that will leave us just over seven million dollars in that reserve that's not designated for something else. We have to be very mindful of that number. We try to make sure that there is at least eight percent. This number would put us right at eight percent of our operating budget. We don't want it to be that low. Our board actually has a policy where we want it to be at least at fifteen percent with a target of twenty percent. Again, I know I'm getting into county budgeting problem more than you'd ever want it to. But the reason I'm showing you this is because as I go through the rest of the budget and I tell you what we plan to spend money on and maybe what we're not going to spend money on. The reason we can't just give to every good thing out there is because these numbers put us in a box, okay? We have to be mindful of where this lands us. And I will tell you that ten point six million dollars, uh, in fund balance appropriation is, is relatively high for us. We are stretching to get there. I, I feel very confident in recommending this budget to be adopted, uh, to our board. The board, we've had a chance to, have, they've had a chance to hear this from me before. But the reason that we can't just add on much more than this is because we are at that number. This would, could potentially put us down to that eight percent. Now, um, here is, if that was county budgeting one-on-one, this is county budgeting one-on-two. We operate on what is called fund accounting. So we have different funds. These are, on this, this, this picture here, it shows five different funds. We actually have a few more than that. But these are the main funds. If you think of general fund as the biggest budget, that is our main fund. That is all of our operations for most of, just about all of our departments. Um, you'll see that arrow coming in, that's what property tax, sales tax, permits, most of our revenue comes into that bucket. And from that, we pay salaries, we pay a light bill, we provide services, we do a lot of things. Another one of our funds is our health department. We have a wonderful health department. We are required by the county to provide public health services. There is a long list of services that we have to provide. We can't say, oh, we just don't want to do that, or we don't have the money to do that. We have to provide it. So though you see an arrow coming into that bucket, the health department does receive funding from the state federal government. We build insurance and Medicaid for some of our services. But all that we get coming in, it is not enough to fill that bucket. So we also have to appropriate money from the big bucket, general fund. Same way with the Department of Social Services. Um, that is by far our largest department. We serve more people through that department than any of our other departments. There are programs and services that we are required to provide. Some of those services, we get some help from the state and or federal government to help us cover the administrative costs, but not a hundred percent of it. That's why you see there's money coming in, that little arrow from state and federal sources, but we also have to put money from general fund into the social service. Then the other two buckets, we have what we call enter- enterprise funds. We provide, um, water and sewer in a bit part of our county. Uh, just about all of our county is covered in water. A good part is covered in sewer service. Um, you will see that there is a, a small arrow coming into it, but there is not an arrow coming from general fund. That is because water and sewer regenerate enough revenue from our fees for that service to cover all of the costs. So that's a good thing. Solid waste is another enterprise fund that we have. As you know, we have nine convenience sites. We have, um, a, uh, a transfer station where we get municipal solid waste or household trash that's then put on a trailer and sent to a regional landfill. We also have a C and D landfill there, uh, on Colonial Road. Um, and unfortunately, that enterprise does not generate enough revenue to cover all of its costs. It is a very expensive service to provide, but a very necessary service. So we have to take funds out of our general fund to put in there. Um, so you graduated from county budget one-on-one and one-on-two. So, overview, uh, overview of the budget. So our tax rate proposed for FY twenty-six, uh, is no change. It will still, the recommendation still be at eighty-nine cents for one hundred thousand value. One cent generates approximately four hundred forty-five thousand dollars. The total budget, uh, proposed for FY twenty-six is eighty-two million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh, this is a change from the current year's original budget of, of just under two million dollars, or a two point five percent increase. The fund balance appropriation, as I showed you that just on that, that chart just a moment ago, the total fund balance appropriation is a little over ten point six million dollars. And this, that is up from this current year's original fund balance appropriation of over eight point one million dollars. So let's talk about our revenues. Um, our two primary revenue sources are property taxes, which equates to about fifty-six percent of our, uh, operating revenues. And the other is sales tax, which is about sixteen percent. As I mentioned, uh, our tax rate is eighty-nine cents for one hundred thousand value. Um, we have an estimated collection rate of ninety-six percent for real property and one hundred percent for motor vehicles. In other words, of all the people that owe, uh, property taxes in that first year, we anticipate we will collect ninety-six percent of that. Ultimately, we collect pretty close to all of it over a ten-year period. Uh, we generally anticipate collecting a hundred percent of motor vehicle taxes. That's because of the tax tag, you can't get your registration unless you pay your taxes. Our projected revenues is a little over thirty-eight million dollars, but we are actually, we're being conservative just in case it doesn't, does not go as well, just in case we don't collect ninety-six percent. We are being a conservative and estimating that to be thirty-seven point four million dollars. So that is part of our budget for next year. For sales tax, um, through, the, the current year-to-date sales tax revenues are expected to at least meet the budget. They are below what we collected at the same time last fiscal year. Therefore, we have budgeted total sales tax revenues flat for FY twenty-six for a total of ten million, four hundred thousand. I do want to note to the board, some of you are already aware, the budget committee members are already aware, when I presented this at your work session a couple of weeks ago, we had actually taken that back of, by overall, a total of five hundred thousand dollars. We have revisited that. Um, I think we feel confident that we will at least meet that conservative budget. Again, we likely will collect more than that this year, but we are being conservative. But I want to stress to the board, because ultimately, the board will have to vote on this budget, that with all projections, it is a, uh, Ms. Barfield, and I want to recognize our chief financial officer, Ms. Linda Barfield, who's been the tip of the spear in preparing this budget and has done a fantastic job. Ms. Barfield uses the phrase often, I borrowed from her, a calculated risk. Right? We're taking a calculated risk. We are estimating, we are hopeful, keep going to Walmart and Dollar General in the store, spending money so we can get sales tax. But, um, you know, things could change and go the other way. I note, we have many, many, uh, revenue lines. I certainly won't go over all of those. Um, but, uh, a couple of notes, other notes I want to mention is inmate housing. That has been something that our board has, um, looked closely at and talking with our sheriff, Sheriff Cleakerson over the last, uh, few years. Uh, Sheriff Akerson used to house federal inmates, uh, but based over, based on some of his concerns at the time, uh, some turnover in staff, he felt like that he needed to more so focus his attention on in-county, um, inmates and not housing federal inmates. And, and our board certainly understood, uh, we understand that position, but it did dramatically cut down our revenue from that. Uh, you'll see, uh, currently, um, our, uh, in current fiscal year is running below budget. So we've increased the budget by eighty thousand, and FY twenty-six, the budget is two hundred thousand. Emergency medical service, that was brought up in the previous public hearing. Um, we do have full-blown EMS operations here, uh, in the county that used to be provided by an outside, um, entity. We brought that in-house back in twenty-one, I believe it was. Um, we are expecting our EMS revenues to meet, to make budget for this year. We are reviewing our fee schedule, but we have budgeted that flat, um, again, for another three million dollars. As a note, um, we do not collect all that it costs us to run EMS in this county. I don't know any county that collects enough from those fees to run EMS. Because our EMS, they're going to come and get you when they, when you call them, whether you have a way to pay us or not, right? That's what we do. And so, but we, uh, we are happy to provide that service. Uh, investment income is another, uh, revenue line that we have had like much discussion about. You know, when you have millions of dollars that sit in a, in an account for some period of time, and all of you are aware that over the last two or three years, that the interest rates have been higher than they were before. One of the good things is that we generate more interest income, uh, from that. So our interest income has far exceeded the FY twenty-five budget. Due to economic uncertainty, we are budgeting that conservative, conservatively for FY twenty-six. Again, I want to pause to point that out to our board. You will remember that when I presented this at your work session, at the time, we were planning to budget five hundred thousand. We have revisited that, still conservative from what we've collected last year and have collected this year, but we have increased that, um, budget, um, from when we last talked about it. So let's talk about expenditures. By far, our largest expenditure, um, you know, are the people that serve you. Uh, they love you, they love serving you, but they don't love you enough to work for free. So we have to pay them, and we have to pay them as best as we can to keep them from going to other counties. Um, so, you know, some of the budget considerations that we had to wrestle with in preparing this budget as it relates to personnel is, first of all, a compensation plan. Um, how do we continue to improve on the competitiveness of our compensation plan? Uh, if we can't catch the pack, can we at least not fall further behind? Uh, our competition primarily are the counties that surround us, but not just the counties that surround us. We implemented a new compensation plan two years ago. It cost us a lot of money to do that, but it helped us to, um, to improve on our turnover rate. But we are still behind the market that's around us. And so we have to consider, can we, if not catch up to it, at least can we not fall further behind? As it relates to benefits and wellness, we have a very competitive benefits and wellness package. Um, but with our claims running high, can we maintain that competitive edge? And third, staffing. Some department heads have demonstrated a need for additional staffing, but with such a tight budget, how can we take on new positions when we need to continue to hold some positions in reserve? And I'll talk about that, uh, a little bit more in just a second. As I mentioned, um, we implemented and overhauled our compensation plan in FY twenty-four. Market study was completed and we updated and restructured our compensation plan. Our pay scales were elevated and existing staff received increases. We did a phase two of the compensation plan, uh, in this fiscal year. Uh, our deputies were sheriff's staff, received ten percent and the remaining staff, five percent. We've also continued to implement what we call credential incentives and strategic use of pay scales to hire and retain. For the FY twenty-six budget, we do have included here a cost of living increase of two percent. Uh, this closely tracks the Consumer Price Index from July twenty-four, April twenty-five. The cost to implement is approximately six hundred and eighty-four thousand, including benefits. Again, I want to pause to point out to our board, when we presented this at our budget work session, we originally did not have this included, but we have since added that to the budget. Our support of a compensation plan has been a wise investment. It has cost the county, but it's been a wise investment because when we have lower turnout, uh, turnover, that equals to better services. Um, it has helped us to address critical vacancies and reduce cri- uh, reducing, by doing that, reducing critical issues. And, and employees want to stay where they are valued. So certainly, we feel like we've got more work to do with our compensation plan, but we are grateful for what we've been able to do in the last couple of years. Our health and wellness program, um, we are self-insured, for those of you who may not know. Um, therefore, our costs are driven by our claims. We are not in a hole with another county. We are not part of the state insurance plan. Our costs are totally driven by, um, our claims. And so due to an increase in our claims in the last three years, we are, uh, again, increasing our. And so due to an increase in our claims in the last three years, we are again increasing our premiums by six percent. And that's the total cost of approximately three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. For our board, you will remember that we had a six percent increase last year as well. Other health benefits, and there are no changes in this, but we continue to offer our HSA option. The board provides, or the county provides seven hundred and fifty dollars in the HSA account for our staff who elect to have the high deductible plan. We provide dental vision. We offer an annual screening, and for those who participate in the annual screening, the fifty dollar per month premium is waived. We also offer a clinical disease and weight management program that our staff can participate in. We also will continue to add, offer our wellness incentive. We've been doing that for several years now. So two hundred and fifty dollar wellness incentive is given to employees who meet the waist circumference standard or improve by weight or waist by five percent. Again, no changes in that. There were nine full-time equivalents, as I mentioned a moment ago, some additional positions that were requested by, some of our departments, in fact, nine departments. Requested new positions, I'm sorry, nine new positions were requested by five of our departments. I believe there is justification for adding these positions as they would improve service provision and advance the mission of the county. However, we're not in a financial position to add any new positions at this time. I do recommend to the board that we leave the door open and allow ourselves to reconsider that in the future. Just as we did last year, we are putting some of our vacant positions in reserve. These are positions that we believe for ultimate service provision, you'll remember that, that slide I showed you a few slides ago. The reason we exist is to provide services. We believe that we really need to fill those positions if we can. We closely analyzed that and you'll see in those three departments. We, we tended to have these, at least these vacancies in those departments. And so in order to help minimize that fund balance appropriation number that I showed you earlier, we are putting these positions in reserve. We don't call it eliminating the position because we do want to have the opportunity to come back and potentially revisit adding those positions in the budget. I will note to the board, and I, I mentioned this at the work session, it includes the same departments, except last year, we put some positions in the sheriff's office detention in particular and reserve. I believe there were five positions. As I mentioned to you at, at the budget work session, what we found was that they've got to have coverage on those shifts regardless. So if we don't allow them to fill those positions, that just means the existing staff are having to work a lot more overtime. So instead of putting those five positions in reserve, we budgeted for those, but we've gone and, and pulled back the budget for the overtime line accordingly. Capital outlay. So as, as an overview of our capital outlay in FY twenty six, this budget includes a minimal appropriation for new capital outlay. What we have budgeted are ongoing installments on previously purchased capital totaling of a hundred and seventy six thousand, eight hundred and ninety four dollars from general fund. Now, I'm speaking of capital purchases for the county itself. We do make an appropriation to the school system, for example, for annual capital, but this is for the county, county operations. We are considering the strategic use of debt to meet some of our critical needs. And to leverage the needs-based school capital funds for major project in North Edgecombe High School. And to preserve cash flow, we propose the use of county debt, of the county's debt capacity. I will direct the board's attention. You have a spreadsheet on your, at your table there, you've seen this format before. Whereas when we met the last time, we had, we originally did not include any purchase of annual capital, except for those installment payments that I mentioned. What we have done is I've gone back and you'll see that line that says possible financing number two. I've gone back and except for large format printer in tax, tax office, the rest of those are vehicles. And so you'll see that we're proposing to purchase some vehicles through financing. So I'll go to the next slide. So I want to note that debt service for these projects are not expected to begin until FY twenty seven. So all of the borrowing that we have been talking about doing, we anticipate the payback of that to not start until the following fiscal year, FY twenty seven. So it does not impact FY twenty six. But just, you know, for everyone's, you know, understanding and knowing the direction that we're going in. We're looking at facility improvements, a total of a little over two point four million. Vehicle purchases, one point three million, that includes sixteen vehicles, one ambulance, and then that one piece of equipment in the tax office that I mentioned. We're looking at solid waste equipment, seven hundred and twenty five thousand. And also meeting the five percent match requirement for the North Edgecombe School capital project. For those of you in the audience who might not be aware, Edgecombe Schools and Edgecombe County jointly have been awarded sixty four million dollars for, for a capital project on North Edgecombe campus. That will consolidate schools, that will include Coca-Wenly and Phillips consolidating on that one campus. One of the requirements of that funding is the county has to provide five percent match. So that equates to about three point two million dollars. We are doing our due diligence to look at what it will cost us to borrow that money. And then if we have the debt capacity to be able to, to handle that. So to that point, I'll go to the next slide. Why, why would we consider issuing more debt? Debt is a normal part of doing business for county. I can't think of any county that does not have some debt. We have debt already, that's just part of what we do. But we, we try to be very thoughtful before we add any new debt. And so first of all, we consider the need, though we have addressed many critical needs in our facilities and with equipment, ongoing needs, demand, our attention. Key debt policies, our board has certain policies that they adopted some years ago. We have ran the analysis on that and we've seen that we can take on additional debt and remain within our key debt policies. And that includes our ten-year payout, debt to assess value ratio, and debt service to expenditures ratio. And also probably the more, I guess the more important thing perhaps is that we do have some step downs in our current debt structure. That opens up some cash flow capacity to take on additional debt. You'll see there on the slide, we expect our debt service to go down over to six hundred thousand in FY twenty six, another eight hundred thousand in twenty seven, two hundred and some thousand in twenty eight. So over the next three years, a total of one point seven million dollars, our debt service will go down. So that gives us some cash, cash flow to be able to take on some additional debt. We don't want to borrow it just to be borrowing it, but these are things that are critical, necessary for the operation of, of the county and the service we provide. Agency funding overview. Overall, we received requests from outside agencies totaling over twenty one million dollars. Our total budget proposed in the FY twenty six budget is fifteen million, five hundred and seventy nine thousand, one hundred and twenty four dollars. It is, it is a usual thing that we get more requests than we're able to satisfy in the budget. This year, the request that we received was higher than usual, but right now, the budget includes a little over fifteen, fifteen and a half million dollars total for all of the outside agencies. All total, the total change for outside agency funding is actually going down just a little over two thousand dollars. Essentially, we are at flat funding for our outside agencies. Again, I want you to remember that spreadsheet that I showed you at the very beginning. In making these very difficult decisions, we have to see what those numbers could potentially be. Just as a note, our largest of, our top five funding recipients, you'll see Edgecombe County Schools, by far as the largest recipient, largest outside agency that we fund, eleven point six million dollars. Edgecombe Community College, Nash County Schools. As you know, there are still Edgecombe County students that are in Nash County Schools that are in the process of transitioning to Edgecombe County Schools. Edgecombe Library and Caroline's Gateway Partnership, those are our, our five largest funding recipients, outside agencies. I showed you those buckets earlier, I talked about two of those buckets being our enterprise funds. These are types of funds that account for activities that charge users for goods and services. The goal of the enterprise fund is to be self-sustaining and not rely on tax revenues transfers from the general fund. As I mentioned earlier, water and sewer, we are at a place where it does support and sustain itself. Unfortunately, solid waste does not. When we are deciding what our rate should be, we have to balance between charging enough for those services to try to cover the cost of providing those services. But we try to also be mindful of the burden that we push on to the users of those services, which are primarily you, our citizens. So in solid waste, the cost of operating solid waste continues to exceed revenues generated. The contract for transport and disposal of solid waste to the regional landfill is increasing by five point two percent. We propose to increase the municipal solid waste tipping fee from seventy five dollars a ton to seventy nine dollars a ton. And the household solid waste free fee from one hundred and twenty five dollars to one hundred and fifty dollars. In water and sewer, the revenues continue to cover expenditures. We just learned, we just learned, and again, board, this is something new from what we reported at the budget work session, because we just found this out. We just learned that our two suppliers, who are Rackham Mountain Tarbroom, will have rate increases. We are evaluating our recommended changes in rates and will present that at your June twenty third meeting. I will note, for those of you who may have gone online to see my budget message, that has not yet been updated. So I want to make sure that I pointed that out because we just, we just learned that in the last couple of days. So with all of that, at the very beginning of the presentation, I talked about, we have to balance between making sure that we provide the service day-to-day that we need on a day-to-day basis. But at the same time, we try as much as we can, as much as we can afford to and are able to, we try to at least have one eye looking towards the future. As I mentioned, our getting off the list initiative, many of you have been in meetings, you've heard us talk about this before, some of you are on maybe one of our advisory boards. We continue to work to impact our four focus areas, which are affordable and safe housing, health equity, education, workforce, and youth and families. We are working to create better support structures for those already doing work in these areas and strategically invest in our resources. So that over time, that we will get off of those lists. What our board decided to do last year, we're doing, or this current year, and we will plan to do the next fiscal year, is that for what we call our discretionary funding for outside agencies. Now, what we provide to Edgecombe Schools, Edgecombe Community College, and a few others, we're required by state law to provide that funding at some level. So that's not discretionary. But then, you know, over the years, we've had many nonprofits that our board has invested in, sometimes small amounts. We've had nonprofits we've given five hundred dollars to, some we've given thousands of dollars to. What our board decided to do last year, or this current fiscal year, was our first year, we decided to be more strategic in the use of that outside agency discretionary funding. So instead of just opening broad and wide, whoever so will come and ask for this money, we put out a request for proposal and said, we want proposals from agencies and organizations who are specifically doing work in one of those four focus areas. So we received those proposals at the, before the beginning of this current fiscal year, we reviewed those, made recommendations, and we have funded up to twenty five thousand dollars per proposal. This current year, I think we're funding nine of those. You'll see in this slide, we have again budgeted that two hundred thousand dollar block, which is what we have this year. We've had no change in that, no proposed change. We have put out a request for proposals and, and we received twenty four, twenty five proposals, I believe, that we will be reviewing. We have a committee that will review those and come back and make recommendations to our board after the start of fiscal year. Also, with an eye looking towards the future, we have an initiative we call Edgecombe Works. It's a broad initiative and it is focused on trying to help us overcome one of those lists in particular. And that is, unfortunately, we have one of the highest unemployment rates in the state. And so we want to make more strategic investments to help people get the skills that they need so that they can get the job that they want. So this current year, this current year is our second year doing this, I believe. We're looking to do this again next fiscal year, but we have these suite of programs, if you will, called Edgecombe Works. It includes the Promise Program, that is a scholarship program that's administered by Edgecombe Community College. This is our second year doing that, it's been very popular. And so it helps our residents to get training that otherwise they might not, might not be able to afford. It's also a program called Earn as You Learn, that's actually a training program that's primarily created for our staff so that they can get training, but it's also available to the public. We pay for training for our staff where they can get training in certain credential-related areas while they are employed by us. There's also the Edgecombe Works Academies Program. Academies in the community college world is that they stack individual credentials together. If it's ninety six credit hours, they can call it an academy. The community colleges do all kinds of academies. They have created for us two academies in particular. One is called the Office Skills Academy. So we've had two rounds of employees, our employees to go through that training program. And now they, another one called the Hands-on Skills Academy. Again, we have some, our employees that are in that, but we also have some county residents that are in that as well. And finally, the working edge, under Edgecombe Works, it is a, a, two or, or three, actually, summer initiatives that are geared towards our youth. These are high school kids that can participate, industry-recognized skill development apprenticeships and career exploration, entrepreneurship training and youth-focused citizens academy. So those four programs are included in the FY twenty six budget. Just a few other budget notes, I will note that the, the Battleboro or Harrison Fire Department, we have fourteen volunteer fire departments in the county. And they generate revenue to be able to provide the service that they provide through a fire tax. Each year, all of the fire departments can review if they want to request an increase in their fire tax. This year, Battleboro Fire Department is the only department that is requesting that. They're requesting that their fire tax be increased from twelve cents to fourteen and a half cents. And so the board will consider including approving that as part of the budget when they adopt it. Probably more of interest to our staff and to our board, this year, we invested some money to have, to, to have our sheriff, to have some of this off-duty, off-duty staff to provide security in some of our buildings. It's not every day, but several days in a week in our four main buildings to help improve security in our buildings. That is again budgeted in next fiscal year. And finally, a budget note that our board is already discussed, we discussed, the budget committee of our board has discussed, the recommendation is that, as you saw in the earlier slide, one of our priorities is education. We are happy that the increases that we have provided to Edgecombe Schools over the last three or four years, where we've helped to increase our capital funding, as well as helped to increase the, the local supplement, which has gone from seven percent to ten percent. It's very expensive for us to do that, but it's necessary. And so we are sustaining that in the proposed budget, but we're not proposing any increases except for the additional funds that will come from Nash to Edgecombe as a result. Edgecombe Schools as a result of tenth grade transition to Edgecombe Schools. However, we are making it known publicly that education is a priority and we'll, we'll revisit additional funding by mid-year. So how the coming year plays out is, it will be critical to us. Will we have a recession that will impact what our sales tax receipts are? If, if it's too bad it lasts too long, it will make it difficult for people to pay their priority taxes. How will our revenues perform? Will we see measurable growth in our tax base? A lot of, some discussion about that tonight. Will we see measurable growth in our tax base? Answers to those questions are vitally important. And I know every year, our team, we always say how tough the budget is. This was particularly tough, I've been manager for nine and a half years, it's probably the toughest one I've had to do so far. I'm suspecting next year, unless, I suspect next year will probably be as tough, if not tougher. However, we are pleased that with the budget that we are presenting, that there are some critical things that we are accomplishing with this proposed budget. Number one, we are maintaining our tax rate. I live in this county, I'm not from here, but I do live here at Tarbroom, and I pay these taxes to UA, to the county, and to the. and I pay these taxes to UA, to the county, and to the town of Tarboro as well. I don't want our taxes going up, but I tell you what, it would help. But we don't want to raise our taxes. So we have, we're maintaining our tax rate, we are addressing some critical capital needs. We are maintaining some progress that we've made in a lot of areas. We are investing in getting off the list, and we are addressing many of the key priorities that our board has, our board has outlined. So that is my presentation of the budget. I'm happy to answer any questions of the board, and I have. And I know, Mr. Chairman, that you will invite comments, and we certainly welcome your comments and excited to get your feedback to me.
Good question from the board. Are you not interested?
All right, thanks.
Well, that's a good time. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we call for public comments. Is everybody, anybody to speak? I'm going to ask this off of this floor, if there's anybody to speak, and I'll go back. And please come forward and state your name, and I can start the public press. Anybody here to speak? Please raise your hand if I speak. Okay. Hold on, I'm ready.
This is about the question.
Right, this is about the question. It's about the question. See, I've voted petition. I want you to nothing, I go, huh, I guess, okay.
I saw a spring earlier, and it was something about parks and recreation. Next thing, the budget, I didn't.
Yes.
Question. They dress them robes down here, I thought everybody knew. I'm sorry. They know up to you. I know some years ago, there was some money that was being set aside for parks and recreation, and somehow it got shifted over to the student system or some type of county that had been doing some of the charities and other things. I just wanted to say the same case, because to me, they were not really recreation.
Would you like me to address that?
Please do.
Yes. So the county has, excuse my partner from the back, but the county has, for many years, supported a summer recreation program through Edgecombe County Schools. And I don't know when it started, a long time ago. We continue to provide funding for that program, and we've seen it as a beneficial program. But in addition to that, a few years ago, we started something called a Recreation Mini Grant Program. And so we started off ten thousand, we went up to twenty. Last couple of years, including next fiscal year, we had fifty thousand dollars in that. We invite nonprofits, agencies, even some of our towns, the school system, Towne Tarboro, Towne Canita, missing some. They have requested these, we call them micro grants, they can get up to three thousand dollars to help with making small investments in these recreational efforts. In some way, they are to help to create new recreation, parks and recreation opportunities. So we continue to do that. So those are two of our parks and recreation initiatives. Third, we did some years ago, a Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. That plan encouraged the creation of a Parks and Recreation Department, which we did. It's a smaller department, it's an apartment number one right now. But we do have a Parks and Recreation Director. His name is Kelvin Jones. He's been with us now for just over a year. He's off to a great start. One of the things, since there are a number of people that are in the room from the school system, one of the things that has come out of that is his work with the school system to create an elementary basketball league that we're very excited to partner with the school system on and to make a small investment in that. He's doing a number of other things. So to answer the question, yes, we're still providing its funding to the school, but we're also doing the Recreation Mini Grant. We do have a Parks and Recreation Director.
In this room, if somebody's speaking, please come. Come forward. Please raise your hand. Okay. I'm not supposed to say your name now. I'll start over. Please state your name, Madge's Hiller.
Yes, my name is Bunnily Maron. Madge's Twelve Twenty Cuckoo Road, Rockhamount, North Carolina, two-seven-eight-one. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bunnily Maron, I'm Captain Assistant at Deans Johnson Elementary School. And I'm a proud member of Edgecombe County Association of Education. Our union now represents the majority of Edgecombe Public School Board workers. That means over half of us, faculty, staff, bus drivers, teacher assistants, teachers, have joined together to speak with one voice. And tonight, we are asking you to listen. I'm here because I love my job, I love my job, and I love this community. I do my job because our Edgecombe County Schools and our Edgecombe students matter. And someone has to speak up for our students. This is why I am here. We've been working short-staffed over a year. Many of us are doing multiple jobs every day. Feeding kids, cleaning buildings, driving a bus, just to keep the school daily moving, daily. Some of us leave one job at two P.M. and come back to drive a bus. That's me. Often without getting paid for their time in between. That's me. This isn't sustainable. You can't retain, you cannot retain people if you won't pay them a living wage. Cannot retain them. This year's school budget composing isn't extravagant. It's the bare minimum. Bare minimum to stop the bleeding and keep our schools running. We're frustrated, we're short-staffed, we're believing. A thousand-dollar raise for classified staff, a seventy-fourteen percent raise for bus drivers, a one percent supplement for certified staff, and a four-point-four million dealing repairs for our schools that are literally falling apart. We're urging you to fully fund this budget, not just in part of it, not just in part of it, not just what's convenient, fully fund the one-point-four, one-point-four million in raises and the four-point-four million in the repairs. Because if you don't fund it now, you will pay later. In vacancies, in turnovers, in broken buildings, and in broken trust. We showed up tonight, we're here. And I thank you so very much for your time, for your listening ears, and for your hearts of concern and understanding of our needs. And we'll piggyback out this lady in that earlier in Part One, and she was our resident in Michael's Field, and caught me up wrong when I chose a wheelchair. Low wages, cannot purchase a home, cannot do nothing. I want to purchase a home, I cannot offer fifteen dollars per hour, or for six-point-five hour. Thank you.
You guys, yeah. Just give a little.
Good evening. My name is Sue Howard, and I am with Edgecombe County Memorial Library. Thank you. And so I also live in Tarboro, so I can give you nine oh nine North Green Street or one oh four and a half East St. James Street. But anyway, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the library. So my name is Sue Howard, and I have been the Director of Edgecombe County Memorial Library for the past nine months. Although we did get some funds from the county a couple of years ago to help with the significant renovation of public spaces at the library, the library has not received a recurring increase for the past five years. A couple of months ago, when we started to put together our funding request, there were very encouraging articles printed about the financial status of the county, so we decided to ask for a much-needed increase in our funding. Inflation and other pressures are causing us to dip into our reserves. I understand that the county's financial condition is not as robust as the press let us believe, but before you make your final decisions about the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six fiscal year budget, I thought that I should share some information about what the library's annual allocation actually pays for. Edgecombe County and the town of Tarboro own the main library building and property fifty-fifty. For many years, however, the library has paid for all maintenance and upkeep. Plumbing and electrical repairs, a roofing service contract and roofing repairs, and HVAC service contract and all HVAC repairs, parking lot maintenance and repair, including filling potholes, and lawn care and landscaping, including tree removal. The costs of these services have risen approximately twenty-five percent over the past five years in spite of our having put off tasks such as tree removal and pothole filling in hopes of receiving increased funding or assistance. Personnel expenses, primarily retirement matching and healthcare, have increased approximately fifteen percent. And that's because the only, the only increases in pay that have been given have been due to people leaving and that money being spread around. We haven't had COLAs or, you know, haven't had any, any increases for that, but, but we've been able to manage by losing staff. So non-personnel costs associated with the running of the library have increased approximately thirteen percent because we have learned to make do and do without when possible. In spite of these challenges, though, I am very excited about all the programs and services the library continues to provide. We have books, periodicals, book classes, and storytimes, as you might expect. However, we also provide one-on-one computer training, resume writing and job search assistance, and other computer assistance for patrons. We are partnering with ECU Health, that hosts digital literacy classes. We are partnering with Freedom Organization to promote our seed library and the community gardens of Princeville in East Tarboro. We and the Friends of the Library are partnering with the Tarboro Players to provide entertainment and learning experiences for people of all ages. We have meeting spaces where the Friends of the Library regularly host art exhibits by local artists. We use our Furman Matheson funds to support cultural and educational opportunities, such as the ballet, the Tarboro Coral Society, the barter players, and many other wonderful programs. We partner with the Board of Elections, allowing them to use our Pine tops Branch Library for both same-day and early voting. In, in two thousand seventeen, when Edgecombe County had not had a passport acceptance office for several years, the State Department asked us to become a passport acceptance agency. Staff members were trained, and we have been offering passport appointments four days a week since then. Our outreach and children's departments go above and beyond to ensure library services are available to all Edgecombe County residents. Our outreach person, a one-person department, takes library materials to homebound patrons and also tailors fun and informative programs to the needs of various groups of senior citizens, assists, and also takes programs to assisted living facilities and nursing homes. Our children's department coordinator, another one-person department, does storytimes, STEM programming, and works directly with the local homeschooling group. We partner with Down East Partnership for Children to bring Kaleidoscope, a program for children ages zero to five and their parents to the library. We also collaborate with Moren Millennium Academy, which allows classes to walk to the library for enrichment programs the first three Wednesdays of every month of the school year. Moving forward, this summer, we plan to partner with the Extension Office to provide exercise and healthy eating programs for adults. If we receive grants we have applied for, there will be other programs and new library materials to support healthy living education for adults in Edgecombe County. That grant program is dependent upon federal monies, so we are not sure whether funds will be there or not. But we are hopeful. We are always hopeful in libraries. We have a wonderful summer reading program planned, which kicks off June sixth. In the fall, we hope to put a pollinator garden in the front yard of the library, working with the Extension Office once again, and get a Carver Elementary to take walking field trips to the Pine Tops Branch as library, as MMA does here in Tarboro. We would like to take a more active role in the Get Off the Lists Initiative, and I would be happy to discuss with how we might be more active in the pursuit if we had the necessary financial resources. You can check our website and our Facebook page to see what is happening at the library. Better yet, please come and see us. We would love to have you see your library in action. Our mission is to meet the educational, recreational, and technological needs of our patrons with respect and patron satisfaction and confidentiality. We offer this attitude and these services to all library visitors every day to the best of our ability. Thank you for listening.
How you doing, everybody? I'm in St. James Weekends, three oh three English Drive.
Hey, I'm Mr. Cole.
I'm Mr. Cole. I'm, I'm actually from Batilla Middle School, and I live out in Halifax, town of Halifax, in Halifax County. Also, Cocoa Wimberly School.
I'm a proud, I am a proud union member of ECAE. And our union now represents majority of Edgecombe Public School workers. We didn't wait for someone to fix things, we organized, because someone has to speak up for our schools. Someone has to speak up for our students. We're speaking with one voice today, we're asking for someone to listen.
All right, budget is not extravagant. It's the bare minimum to keep our schools running and our staff from burning out. A thousand-dollar pay raise for classified staff, a seven-fourteen percent pay raise for bus drivers, a one percent supplemental bump for certified staff, and four-point-four million dollars in repairs for schools that are falling apart. You either fund it now, or you pay it more later. And also, we've been talking about funding projects for people to come live here. If we look at the population from the last ten years, we've lost over seventy-six hundred people. That's an average of seven-hundred-sixty people leaving this county every year. Want to know one of the reasons for that? Because the schools are not properly funded. You fund the schools properly, you're going to have more people move here. To have, to have a solid community, you have to have solid schools. No solid, no solid schools, no solid community, period.
I am urging you to fully fund us, fund the one-point-four million dollar raise to address shortages, four-point-four million for building repairs. Thank you.
Is anybody else? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Marcia Wood Williams, and I live at thirty-one fifty-eight Statensburg Road, Wilson, North Carolina. I am a current MCL at Cocoa Rimble Elementary. This is year three for me in Edgecombe County. I stand before you tonight as the President of Edgecombe County Association of Educators, but more importantly, as the mother of a one-year-old who could potentially be a pre-K student in three years, here in Edgecombe. You know, I, I had a speech prepared to address everyone, the commissioners, just talking about why we need it, but then I sat and I listened. And as I listened, I began to realize that there's a lot of things in common when I was hearing about the budget. It seems like when you were speaking on investing, we have to invest in our people. We have high turnover rates when we don't. We have high turnover rates when we don't do it, that deeply impact the lives of the people that we serve. That hit me here. In fact, it hit me so much that I changed my entire conversation tonight. I heard the word conservative so many times that I had to look it up. Because I spent two hours listening to members of this board speak on innovation, speak on, we've gotta do things differently, speak on what we want for Edgecombe to be true, speak on the change that we wanna see in order to attract, in order to retain, in order to have in this district. Yet, the word of the night was conservative, so much that I had to Google "conservative." And when I Googled it, it actually said it was the act of not changing. The act of staying, holding on to one's traditional values. My statement tonight is to ask, when we're holding on to these traditional values, whose values are we holding on to? Our own personal or to the ones of the people that we serve? I sat and I listened and I heard, I saw. It's that education as a priority. It's that the top three, staff compensation, education, and public safety. Yet, when you went through your budget on tonight, I saw staff compensation and increases for your department. I saw nothing for education because in fact I saw no increase. And I saw public safety being defunded, meaning it was losing funding, coming under budget. So I asked again, when you state your priorities, whose priorities were these? Because I did not see staff compensation, compensation for our public school workers.
That's right.
For the certified worker, the cafeteria staff worker that comes in every single morning at Coker at six forty-five, works till one fifteen, leaves Coker, goes to Tarboro High, drives a bus, gets off that bus, and goes to Pizza Hut to work until eleven o'clock at night just so she can rent a place to live in, not rent you. So she can rent. So tonight, instead of me saying my speech that I prepared to talk about why you should fund it, I wanna say we are relatable. We all seek individuals that we serve. We want the resources to be able to serve them. We're not asking for everything that you have. But when you talk about being conservative, but I'm in a building where a classroom teacher had to buy a box fan because her kids were so hot, but you don't wanna give money for air conditioning? When you talk about, I understand there are priorities in this county. But when we talk about us asking Down East Partnership, can you do a coat drive? Does in the wintertime, our kinders have to wear their coats? Yes, I'm super excited. I'm a part of that new school that's coming at north. But guess what? In that budget, I didn't see anything in the superintendent's budget that reflected building repairs for Coker. So that means two more years of box fans, two more years of our kids wearing coats just to learn. I ask you, I'm not asking, I'm telling you, how would you like it if that was your child sitting in that classroom?
Amen.
How would you like it? You talked about your employees, and I understand that, human capital. We, I know some of you will say, salary's not gonna keep a person. If they wanna go to the next county to get paid more, they will. But what happens when all of your educators do that? You wanna attract people to here? I know when I moved three years ago, one of the first things I did was I looked at school ratings. Because when we talk about buying homes, parents look to see school ratings. Parents look to see ratios. Parents look to see the educational system. So if we wanna invest in Edgecombe as being the best, which I believe it can be, will be, because we are on the trajectory to be, should be, we've got to make sure that when we talk about innovation, when we talk about resources and priorities, don't list a priority if we're not gonna fund that priority.
You ain't never coming.
My name is Shabana Andrews. I work in Edgecombe County, but I live in Pitt County, Farmville. And I love Edgecombe County. I've been working in this county for four years as an educator, first grade teacher at GW Bullitt Elementary. And, and as my colleagues have been saying, you know, we've been here for the last two hours just to have our voices heard, just to make sure that we are a part of this budget because, like they were saying, a thousand dollar raise for classified staff, um, seven fourteen raise for bus drivers, and one percent supplement increase for certified staff, and the four point four million in building repairs. It, it, it is very insignificant sounding, but it means so much to us. It means so much to the children that we serve. It's not really, it is about us, but it's also about the children we serve, without the families, without the parents bringing their children to these schools. You know, the, the county would go down even the more, as my colleague stated. You know, and I did have something to say tonight, but she really said it all, and I just wanna be fair to really reiterate that this budget proposal is very, very important. And it is critical that you all please pay attention to the need of Edgecombe County Public Schools because there is a great, great need, a dire need.
This is the last person to comment.
This is Nancy, um, one-two-seven, Midway Lane, Tarboro. I'm not gonna say it, three miles out, nine miles out, seven miles out, Tarboro. I too had something to say, but following the speaker before the last speaker, he about summed it up. Safety, schools, we, we deal with the redistricting right now. That's, that's top five. But I just wanna say this. Not only are, are funding, but just in the paper the other day, a school recognized some bus driver, and they didn't put a name. And I posted, do these folk have a name? At least if we're gonna honor.
At this time, I'd like to, uh, during the Republican term, there will be no access to take all that out. But I, any comments from the board?
I did wanna say, uh, I would, I appreciate all of these, um, educators, uh, bus drivers, uh, lunchroom people, and I've been in most of your schools, so I do know what they are and what's happening in them. And I want you to know that I did ask, we were in our joint meeting with the school board, about capital projects. Because you know, north side's strong side. So I had to ask, and so they made it, make sure that I knew that because there are gonna be changes at Coker Whimley and Phillips, that was why I'm part of the capital projects were not being done, but that wasn't satisfied to me because I know it's gonna be three years. So, like I said, at some schools, the teacher's already told me she's gotta put a blanket down in case of rain. So we, we do know exactly what you're going through. But we're also going through. Every other department is going through as well. But believe me, we have not forgot, and our manager said, we're gonna make sure that we take another look, because we know how important it is. And because that school, you may wanna ask school board members about those capital projects. Because I did ask that question, even though there's gonna be a transformation. The transformation's gonna take a while. So I would like to see some things down on the north side taken care of, not all on the south side. So that's in my observation.
Thank you, Ms. Howard, for speaking on the library. I just wanted to reiterate, I, I know that there's some capital improvement projects that need to be done there. I would ask that, that if we could please get a list of what those are and see if any. I, I ask for critical needs of that, of that, and I think it's an AC unit, is that right? In the Tarboro Library, there's an AC unit that desperately needs to be addressed?
We have an old boiler system, a boiler-chiller system, which currently is only working to produce air conditioning and not heat. So there are areas of the library that just, that have not had heat for several years now. Um, with the new renovations from the past couple of years, there is more bleed-through. The, um, couple of years, up till a couple of years ago, for over five years, the children's department had no heat at all. Um, but with the new, with the new, uh, room that has been set aside, the new meeting space that has been created with the ductless system, it's only half of the children's area and a good section of the staff area in the back that, that does no, that doesn't get heat.
I have my recommendation, as we're looking at those CIP finance projects, could we please include those items in that? I mean, if we need to go to the town, because I, I think, do we own that building? There's a tent or a shed or?
Fifty-fifty.
There's, there's some kind of compromise there. I feel like that we can address that issue. Going twelve to four years without heat, however, is not great. I think that, if we could have, maybe we work on a regular, more regular schedule, you follow that.
Mr. Chairman, may I note, and may be of interest to those that are here speaking on this matter tonight, just as an FYI, of, of several comments were made about facility needs. We have funding that comes in from sales tax, percentage of that has to go towards, um, capital for schools. We use that to pay debt service that we own school projects. We provide annual capital to that. What is not used goes into a capital fund that accumulates. Um, and so as the school system brings projects for us, for example, this year we have eight hundred thousand dollars has already been designated to the school for capital projects. In addition to that, they can make requests to tap into those sales taxes accumulated in that fund. Later on the agenda tonight, you have, uh, that list to be reviewed, I think it's over four hundred thousand dollars worth of projects. So I just wanted to mention that, it may be of interest for those who talk about that matter, that there is some movement on some of these things tonight.
And that movement in terms of prioritize, where the spending is coming from?
The school board, yes, sir.
I guess I just got one comment that was, uh, I think it's really cool. Google's definition of conservative. I don't accept that definition as, in terms of, uh, uh, and I don't call myself liberal or conservative. I don't know what I am. I speak to the issues as they come to me. But I, I, I do, our, our board is, we, we've had ongoing discussion, we are concerned. I mean, we might not necessarily get those probably concerned because those are concerns that we do have. And I, I met with your committee earlier, you just, I think was, was it just with the last one?
Last week.
As a result, I asked you kind of, I asked you to look at it. Uh, I would, we, I would, as I, as I stated to you, uh, we've got a whole different, you know, when we look at our budget, we look at our total budget, how we can spend those funds around. And I asked them to see if we could find funds. I tell you, I know you won't get all that, I know you, nobody gonna get all their requests. But I'm in agreement in terms of, in terms of, um, uh, in a little bit counts. And I certainly would ask, uh, ask the manager to go back and, and ask how much you committed to review. At least what we call that, these staff, those staff, and ask them to review and see if there's anything we can do. And if I believe if that can be found, I believe it is, we can consider, okay? If the budget is not found, you know, I, it's like I told you that I promise nothing. You're not gonna call me a liar. But we certainly will look at, um, I've heard all of you, everything you said makes sense. We do wanna keep you. We do know that we need to keep you. But I'll say one thing, the capital funding is ours. The school board requested, if we got it, we do it. But they request where it goes. But I also say to them, in terms of Phillips and Coker Whimley, is, is Coker Whimley there? Those schools are gonna be closed and consolidated. So the school board is concerned on how they spend that money, okay? They is concerned on how they do capital improvements at those schools. That is the school board concern, okay? That's their business, okay? That's their business. As I said, we, we certainly, I'm, I'm asking them, the manager to look at that. And those things we will, um, maybe no commitment, that's the word. Because as I told you at the committee, okay, I was depending on revenue. And we have to assign that revenue based on everything that you heard the manager say, okay? This is only a recommendation. Found to see how this month's gonna be the best with us. There's seven, there's seven of us on this action, okay? I, I made no commitment. We certainly will revisit. At this time, we'll move on to further petitions. You go and say anything, anything else. We, we listen. We will listen.
We appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a further petition from the library. Go ahead. Yeah, I respect y'all, uh, three minutes tonight, because I have eight o'clock. They have a appointment now, tomorrow. I think y'all, in the midst of y'all's passion, I put something on y'all's desk there as a public notice here and for the school board, redistricting. And I also like to thank y'all for the resolution for Reverend Walker. Now, we'll be seeing him on tomorrow, if y'all want me to turn it over, so we have to do so. And also, and I'm also thankful y'all be willing to receive the gift of the Charles of Freedom from the Foundation Forward. And as y'all receive it from the Foundation Forward, I hope at some point we can have a second event where y'all can present it to the community at large. Although it's in Tarboro, I still feel like there's an urgent need to respect the other communities out there. And I hope that all those smaller community leadership will have been invited to that event. They may have been, but they wasn't there. But maybe as second ever of the event, I think the whole county needs to embrace that display in a long overdue. And I'm thankful you for your one suggestion that you brought to us.
I have a lift I'm gonna save. Y'all watching something called Sharp Paint.
Don't bring this up.
Before y'all, we feel like we standing for the sharp paint. And being that I'm not asking y'all for nothing, I'm out.
I'll be very brief. I too wanna thank y'all for the Charles of Freedom, uh, I think you'll be all working on the video. But also wanna thank y'all for, um, the movement on the animal shelter. I'm glad to see that, several on that board, I'm glad to see it moving along. I was intending to go out today, take some more pictures, but I'm gonna have to get back to tomorrow. But I also wanna commend you guys, uh, people don't understand how the political process works. And listen to all those comments earlier about the, um, the year Maxfield. At the end of the day, people gotta understand that you gotta abide by policy procedures, and that was the zone. They don't understand that you can't just operate off feelings. You gotta abide by what's in the zone. So thank y'all for staying focused. I don't want your numbers, but at the end of the day, I know y'all don't want your suit, so you gotta follow policy procedures. They might not like it, but it is what it is. And if they don't like it, then you start. They need to run for office, plan for, attend to me, because I'm about to get by myself. So I just wanna thank y'all for that.
See, the last that petition. I was saying, I've been holding them up, it's too long sometimes.
Did that go about how you thought it was gonna go?
What's that?
The thing earlier with Maxfield?
Yeah, because they got to follow their, uh, policy procedures as far as the zone.
Pretty much.
You can't, you can't operate off the motion.
Right. And, and the other thing is, if we just keep saying no to stuff, then.
Well, it's okay to say no to stuff if you operate within the parameters. You can't say no to stuff and we're gonna get sued.
Right.
You know, you got to follow the policy.
I mean, just in, in general, if you keep saying no to stuff, eventually it goes to good acid, and they go somewhere else.
Where? I mean, you just gotta follow policy. And no matter what.